Good morning, welcome back. We're gonna move on to our workshop this morning. Got several good items to discuss and wanna start first by public comment. We have a couple of public comments on items today for the workshop. Elaine Graham is first followed by Heather Felton. So Elaine Graham, come on down.
Good morning. Elaine Graham, speaking on policy 2520. Students have challenges navigating their place in their world. Books with stories and characters who look like them, live like them, and help them connect with the history of them are important. And finally, students can access these wonderful diverse resources. Students don't have to feel as isolated. They know they're not alone with their questions and reading a book feels pretty safe. Choice in reading from a school library or classroom library is powerful for all students. Recent discussion made me feel that maybe there were people who felt like it wasn't the school system's job to provide a wide and varied collection of reading materials for our students. They can get those books somewhere else. No, many cannot. Countless students rely on the school library and the knowledgeable media specialist as many of us probably did too. Parents are the ones who decide what their child does and does not read. I don't decide for other children and neither should you. No one nor one overworked principal or one community member. There needs to be a committee representing the community to review challenged books. There needs to be a committee to review in the sunshine to respond to an objection about a book. There needs to be a committee to reinstate a book. There needs to be a committee to review the differences between library materials containing sexual content, which is allowed, and pornography, which is not. There needs to be a committee to ensure erring on the side of caution doesn't become the norm. Do we want one person making a decision that a student will never discover Anne Frank's quote, "I still believe that people are basically good at heart"? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Ms. Felton?
Good morning. I am Heather Felton. I'm also speaking regarding policy 2520. And I would like to, if the board has not yet seen, the settlement agreement between the state and various different groups regarding the Don't Say Gay law, the initial Don't Say Gay law that came out several years ago. I would like to point out that in the settlement agreement they went through and it stated all the things that the law does not apply to. And included in that is library books. Library books are not classroom instruction and thus not covered by the statute. When the law came into effect and they came through our classrooms and started removing books that were not library books or that were not class instruction books but were library books, class library books, Media Center library books, everybody was erring on a side of caution, a side of fear, and it had a chilling effect on everyone in the This has been shown to not actually apply to those books. But it's too late. So many books have been removed. And I feel that the board needs to look at this and see how can we bring those back that were removed out of fear, out of laziness, and out of overabundance of caution, of erring on the side of caution versus erring on the side of logic. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. So we're gonna move on to workshop items. The first one being the Audit Committee update, proposed changes to the engagement letter and approved audits for the 23, 24 year. So Mr. Daniels, floor yours.
Chairman members, I'm here trying to do some communication and transparency, make sure things are clear going forward. First thing item on the list is a recommendation that you approve the medical claims audit that was submitted and approved by the Audit Committee. That was looking at your self-insurance fund for health insurance at the administrator that's paying those claims. Now, it was a strict, here's the legal amount, is that what they paid? We found some minor errors, some process errors that are being addressed, but no real huge train wreck. The thing we would note is this is something that gives a tool to staff when they go to Aon that's gonna be actually looking at the claims themselves. We did not look at, was this actually appropriate, was this there? We didn't have the bandwidth or the oversight. Was it paid properly? So it's come to you and we recommend approval. Staff is working to get a contract with somebody that is qualified to do that and would move forward. A second item is marked ADA compliance issues, but it's not just ADA. It's seeing changes in how we can publish things, how we can provide stuff to members. One of the things that the Audit Committee used to do is have an agenda packet. We're putting drafts of things in there. We're putting things in there that don't comply with the ADA compliance because it's a working draft. We're not trying to. We've tried to work with CRI to make sure that as things are submitted to us, they're compliant. But yet, they run into a lot of issues because their auditors are not publishers, if that makes sense. They don't have anybody in staff in-house in their entire company that's able to do it to that extent. It's something they're dealing with, not just with the contract they have with you, but contracts in general, and they're looking that they're gonna have to hire out. The reason I mention that is when you hire out, you spend different amounts of money. So as we look forward, we're gonna need to make sure we have some money budgeted in the Audit Committee budget that is able to perform the ADA compliance. The other thing is I'd like to have some clarification or some guidance from you is to what do we as an Audit Committee need to put on the district website? We've talked about cutting down, putting all those reports on there and putting a list and we'll send you something if you ask for it, rather than having it out there in the public on the website where people can go and just find something to sue over. We wanna make sure the information is available to people, but yet do that. I know the district in Scott is working on this issue in general. We just wanna make sure since we're putting things up in your name, that we're following the same guidelines, the same limitations. I have a limitation in this time. We sent things to our members through emails instead of putting it on the website because we were working on some draft stuff, we were working on some stuff that we didn't really want out unless you've completed it, like this report that we're gonna submit has been submitted. We need help, we need guidance. We need, I know again, that the district is working on that and my request is to make sure that our committee is included in the resolution of that so that we can use the resources appropriately, not put the district at risk, and yet still have the information to our members. And I'm gonna give an example. We had our meeting on March the 6th. On March the 4th, we got emailed the engagement letter for Terry Becker for the upcoming audit for us to look at. Well, not knowing it was coming until two days before the meeting, we had a full agenda. We're getting in our risk assessment and just, we had a lot of things to talk about and we didn't get to it. And yet, on the 19th, you approved it. And I'm not saying it's not, didn't need to be approved on the timeline. My point is, the lack of knowing it was coming, the lack of seeing it two days, I couldn't put her on the website, you know, I couldn't, we need to just get a better streamlined portion of communication for us. And so that's what that item too, is it's just, how do we communicate to each other? We're dealing with the sunshine, so I can't call people and talk about it. What we're having again is the stuff comes to be put on there. Instead of putting it on an agenda packet, we've been sending it out email. But that also gets to them disjointed instead of in an organized fashion and it's harder to go through. We're just looking to do better. Going forward, we're looking at where we are on the audit plan for this year. We had an original budget of 1,925 hours and through the end of February, we'd expended 1,047. There's still 878 hours left in that budget for this last quarter. We don't expect to spend all that. And my point is, just because it's in a budget doesn't mean that we want to have it spent. We've got one member that's very, 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 very adamant about what are we spending this money on, which is appropriate. But, you know, there's been some question, we've got new staff in place, we've got some things going on and I just wanted to bring up, that's where we're at. For this year, finishing on June 30th, we had in our plan to go look at facilities. It's an area where we've seen in the past, not necessarily here, but just in general, it's a high risk. You're using things that easily walk, we wanted to go in and look at it. Because of the five-year planning facilities audit that's coming, we've not gonna be able to do that. Can't be in there at the same time if your staff would just be so overwhelmed. In our risk assessment update that's just gotten everybody upset because we spent so much time on it, the highest priority and the highest risk that was identified by you on the board, staff, and ourselves, everybody else, is the payroll process. And so we were gonna put that as number one on next year. But with facilities being put off, we wanna swap them. Go into payroll this last quarter, go ahead and do the work we wanna do there, look at what we need to look at, do the testing we need to do, let facilities deal with this five-year program plan that you've just approved and we'll look at them after the new year starts. Again, that's more information than need any type of approval, but we did say this is what we're gonna do and now we're gonna need to swap and do this. Again, we're trying to only do what is identified as a risk, what we see as a risk, and what we feel we need to do. We've got an engagement letter, it'll be at our May meeting, it'll be brought forward to you for CRI for the 24, 25 year. They're getting it in a new format that's gonna come to you and it's now in the hands of purchasing and legal, where there's a master service agreement. And it'll be for a period of time. If we've gone back to a five-year contract, it'll be for that five years. And then individual engagement letters for each year that have the audit plan and what the budget is, instead of trying to have a 27-page letter every year. They're going to that across the board. The only reason I'm bringing it is up because when it comes to you, it's gonna look different than it has in the past. We've got drafts in the hands of both purchasing and legal right now to make sure the language is appropriate before it comes to you. If there need to be changes, we'll try and take care of that and get it done ahead of time. But going into the next year with that engagement letter, what we've identified through the risk assessment update is several areas, including the sales surstrax we're required to do each year. We wanna look at the facilities that we had planned to do this year. And then human resources was something that came up through the risk assessment and we came up with two potential areas to look at. One of them is just pure compliance. Are we compliant with what the rules are, the law says we're supposed to do, and are our people doing it? And are we checking the boxes and doing everything there? And that's important, we wanna do that. But the other part we've heard through the risk assessment update was there's some questions on discipline. And is it sequential, is it organized, is it, you know, I'm not entirely sure what is there because it's second removed and we wanted to talk before we started digging into something like that. But as we go forward, we'll bring you more details of what we're looking to do, but that's what has been identified with this risk assessment update. The reason we do that is the original risk assessment is required every five years. The last one we did was 2021. And if we go forward into 24, 25 with 21 data, we're gonna miss a lot of things. So we've done updates. It's been so long, so this one is a little more intense than what some of the others have been in the past, the farther you get out from the detailed one. Well, the five-year one is due in '26. Originally, we were talking about doing it this next year. But with the one-year extension to CRI, we're gonna do a regular annual update like we've done this year and leave the five-year assessment, if you want, and this is why I'm asking, leave that five-year risk assessment to whomever gets that new contract that's going out for '25, '26 and the five years we're looking at there. Different districts do it differently. Pinellas hires a firm to come in and do the risk assessment and then hires a different firm to do the work. A lot of firms, if they're gonna do the work, they wanna do the risk assessment. So, you know, trying to be efficient and effective both for the district and for whoever's incoming as the auditor, internal auditor, again, but getting farther out, you need to do a little more detail, a little more work each year because you're farther out from that detailed risk assessment. Whether we do it in '24, '25, or '25, '26, this five-year assessment by whomever does it, it's gonna be a lot more detailed, a lot more intrusive, a lot more troublesome than what has been the last couple of years. I wanna just put that out there now because that is the one that's required and that we will need to comply with. We're looking at that and we'll continue to discuss that with CRI. The last area on that list, number five, is CFAC. And we've heard through the risk assessment, through comments from the board, from members, from staff, from everybody, that there's a process issue getting things done. The way I read the ordinance, their report was due to you on March 9th, 60 days after the external auditor gives their report, they're supposed to have their report to you. And I don't think that they're missing it because they want to, but it's a process. Now, in the Audit Committee, when we go and look at an area, and I'll give sales tax as an example because it's also a revenue with an ordinance with everything else, we set parameters, we establish a scope, and we've hired it out to CRI to do it. Do it on a professional basis, do it on a sample basis, do it in something that would stand up in a legal proceeding because it was done to professional standards. We don't want to take over CFAC. We don't wanna step in other than can we provide some technical assistance? It's up to them to decide the way they wanna go, but what we would like to propose to them is that they let us work with them to get CRI to do that report the way they do the sales tax report. They're used to going into the people here that know who to talk to, they know where the files are. We think it would be more effective, more efficient. Yes, it's gonna cost money. But you look at the time that I understand staff spends with that committee and those people that are doing the actual work, the committee members, it may be a savings in the long run. Again, we're looking for direction. We're not trying to take over or be the ones in charge, we're just trying to, we've got a tool here, can we help you use it? So we're looking for your guidance. I know we're probably not gonna get an answer today, but I need you guys thinking and working on that. How can we, you know, on a technical basis, help accomplish the requirements of that? We've got a vote going forward, late reports, you know, it's going to the ballot. You wanna have that done before people have to go vote on it, I would think. So it last report just a couple of months ago, so we need to speed up the process whether we'd use this or whatever happens. Last item on our areas of concern that we identified is the PeopleSoft controls. And we're not necessarily talking about cybersecurity, but when the program was implemented, it was a train wreck. And you can go look at the papers, those of you that were on the board know what we went through and having to bring in other specialists to help write and help fix and help get things going. And it seems like it's working better. We're gonna be doing payroll, we'll give you a report. This is what we found, this is what's going on. But in the meantime, in our experience, and we've got some very experienced people on that, on that committee, when you implement a program, when you implement a system, there's different ways of doing the process. You can go into two different companies in the same industry using the same software and they use it differently. What we're wondering is in the rush to get things fixed, is it set up as effective and efficiently as it can be? Now, I'll tell you right up front, the committee doesn't have the resources to answer that question. CRI, and we asked, they don't have qualified people to come in and do that. But as you're dealing with security and other issues with it, it may be well that we wanna bring somebody that is a PeopleSoft expert, it's not them, to look at, are there steps we're doing that don't need to be done? Are we missing steps that would make it more quicker, more efficient? And I've done some of that work, not at this level, and you can always find something. And we're again, just putting that out to you, that it is an area of concern that we have because of the haste with which things were changed and then changed again and fixed. And yes, it looks like the payrolls are going out correctly, it looks like human resources are working, you know, those whole systems are working better, but are they working to the best management practices? And I know budgets are really tight this year coming up, things going on, but it's something that needs to be considered in the budget process. Spending some money on that may save a lot of money down the road. I'll stop for questions. I know you've got a lot to go, so.
Anybody questions that wanna start?
Okay.
Yeah?
When you're talking about, first of all, the five-year audit, you're saying that that is potentially gonna go to a, out for bid?
Well, I understand that we did a one-year extension with CRI.
Right.
And then we're gonna go look on a five, up to five-year basis.
Up to a five-year.
An RFP, it's being worked on.
Okay. I'm gonna go down to five on your list to the CFAC. We just had a work, just met Tuesday about that. And in there, in that referendum, it does say there's a Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. If that's blended with the Audit Committee, I can see that being a potential issue. I believe the Audit Committee can support the CFAC in their own controlled environment. And like I said Tuesday, the Audit Committee was able and had fluidity of getting data where the CFAC had issues getting data. On its inception, they, with Mr. Christopher and the whole initial, I think 18 members, was on that committee and the buckets of, their report was defined then and after that, those particular buckets were just fill in the blank, pull the data from, and it was difficult because they were trying to pull data from an old system manually and then try to pull system, data from the PeopleSoft accounting system. So it was a very chunky, I'll say, process to get that going. However, they're down to, I think, seven members and trying to retain people with expertise on that committee has been a challenge.
Yes.
But I do believe that the latest, the new chair and the, another member that's on there has a strong accounting background, will be able to work on that a little better and the timelines a little better. They've asked for data before and it wasn't, it was hard to get, I guess, that's what they were told. Well, we have to wait until the board approves the budget or the board approves the financial quarterly report until we get the information to you. So I guess I'm here defending the CFAC on that because they have tried. The direction, I think, is going in a positive way. Anything the Audit Committee can come in and it help assist, I think, would be beneficial for them.
And our purpose is not to do anything but to facilitate. Again, we've got similar responsibilities and a similar type funding program and have a process where we're able to get the reports out in a timely, appropriate fashion. You talk about the reduction to 18 to seven, that means there's a lot less hands available. We weren't going to necessarily do it as much as help them get connected with CRI if that's who they'd like to use. Maybe help one of us as a professional help define the scope of what they want to their satisfaction and then get out of the way and let them, let CRI answer to them. It's just a tool that's available, not something to take over, not something to push them out. It's just, I hate to see people not able to succeed. And if we wanna succeed, we may need to change the way we do things. We, as an Audit Committee, if we had to go do the sales tax report, even the CPAs, I'd tell you right now, jobs and lives and everything else, you'd be waiting a year for it. So I can relate to what they're dealing with. But we have a firm that is... But we have a firm that has worked very well, that knows their way around where that data is, who to ask, how to ask, how to check it, how to array it, how to present it. And again, we don't do the work because of the nature of the work. Where they can supervise, they can set the scope, they can define, they can review, they can do everything they're doing without having to actually go in themselves. If you've got two accountants out of seven, that means you've got five that don't know accounting and they're flailing because they don't know. I'm not trying to be
Well, I
difficult, but just
Their defense, I'm
I'm, I'm not
I haven't seen their, you know, it's been a while.
I'm not trying to criticize what they're facing. I'm just trying to offer, and the committee is just trying to offer a tool that may facilitate them being more effective. It's be under their control, it'd be under their definition. But we've got something that's here, that's being used, that can be used, and we'll get that information out. With the referendum up on this ballot, it was also considering how to get it done in time. You've got, we need to get it. So if people ask, here's the report. And I know if, in a, in a political environment that we're in on that, that vote, somebody's going to ask. So getting it quicker rather than later, that was a big thing with the timing.
Okay. I've got a bunch to talk about.
Well, I was just going to, the only thing I was going to say is, on that particular item, I think that's a very good idea. I mean, it's something that I've never, and that's why we have you guys, I never thought about, could be potentially used. And it's not taking the CFAC away, it's allowing them to have someone, whether it be CRI or some kind of audit firm, to help with the report and creating that, and what does that look like and that sort of thing, to very much mirror what we do for the sales. I've never sat on the board and seen the sales tax report yet, but, but yeah, so I agree. I mean, I think that's a really, really, really good idea. So appreciate that.
If you would like, I'll get with the other chair or the other committee and, and try and work something up. So by the time they have their committee, we might be able to bring something to them, if you would like me to do that.
That'd be absolutely perfect with me, but.
On this matter, because I was all along, do not combine the, the committees. But I've come around and the we're asking non-accountants to do audit. We're asking non-auditors to do auditing and to write a report and to look at the, look at the, the information and to analyze it. So we're asking them to do something that they're not really equipped to do, which has resulted in some of the floundering. You know, how are we going to do this and, and, and what is the report going to say? I've been, I was on the audit committee when we started doing the sale, when CRI started doing the sales tax audit. And it was, it was labor intensive the first year or two, and then after that, it has been smooth as silk. By having what, what I would suggest is have an outside audit firm, whether it's CRI or another firm, do the audit for, I would even have them do it for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, which is the report that we're waiting on. And just have them go ahead and audit it, do a report, get a presentation out as soon as possible. Next week would be good. And then
Spring break.
Oh, all right. They can have two weeks. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but, but the result of, and, and they work with the CFAC committee, okay? I don't know that audit even needs to be involved. They can go directly, whoever gets hired goes directly to CFAC. They explain the parameters, they explain how they're going to do it, what they're going to be looking for, and they do the report and, and work with CFAC. And what that does is it keeps it totally in line with the, with the ballot language. Because it's, it's definitely saying CFAC, it's not saying audit committee or even a general oversight committee. And then it puts together a professional product that's going to have better buy-in, I think, from the public. And I would suggest we start, we start it now. Have them do June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, year end, and then June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
You say there, you ask, are you saying, just to clarify, you're saying ask CRI to do it? Or just
If, if, whoever the board wants, you know, but it'd be, it'd be more efficient to use CRI at least for, for twenty twenty-three. At that meeting, at the audit committee meeting, they said that they figured it would take three hundred hours for the first year and then two hundred hours after that would be, would be their, their, their guess on that. And if you figure a couple hundred dollars an hour average, you know, you can kind of figure out what that would be. You know, that's my recommendation, I think, and I, and, you know, like, like Mr. Daniel said, we need to think about it, talk about it, but I think there's a lot of benefit from that. The, and then I have comments on the other items, but if we want to finish talking about this, this item.
I mean, does anybody else have any particular comments about just the CFAC? Yeah, go ahead.
I tend to agree with Ms. Foreman. I think you guys working, or not you, I guess CRI working with the CFAC would be, would be helpful to them. The, the report that I looked at was, was done in a way that showed some effort, but if we could have it in a more professional and more organized format, maybe that would be helpful. And I tend to agree that the people who are on that committee, while they work hard and they do a good jo, I'm sure they do a good job and they're volunteering and I appreciate their civic efforts. They are doing apparently auditing kind of functions. A lot of that comes down to judgment. I mean, some people might say, well, I think this was a valid expense and I don't think this was a valid expense. And I think having an unbiased arbitrator to make those kind of decisions would be helpful to the committee, so.
Well, I would point out that they don't, CRI does not make the decisions, like on, like on sales tax. I mean, if it's, if it's flagrant, yeah.
Right.
They'll, they'll do that and they'll, they'll report to the committee saying, we saw this and don't think it's appropriate. If it's questionable, which has, which has come up, and in fact, we had
Question cost.
Question sent to Mr. Dye twice, still not getting the answer they want, or some, some want. And, but, but then, but then if it's, if it's that kind of a judgment call, then it could go to the attorney and get, get an opinion. So, you know, I, I think it's just a very, it's a good, it's a good way to do it.
If I may, let me just clarify, the audit committee's participation would be strictly limited on a technical basis, telling the committee how we use CRI, how they come back in midstream and report to us, we're able to change, you know, just what our process is. Make sure they know it and how we do it, get them hooked up and get out of the way. I mean, it's their, their responsibility totally. We're just trying to help the district.
So can I ask, what is the current process? Let's say somebody on the CFAC believes that an expenditure was not in line with the mileage language. What, what's the process to challenge it or to bring it up and say, we don't think this was a proper expenditure? They put it in the report? Do they, they put it in their annual report? They bring it up through channels to legal or what? What is the process? Or is there one?
Okay. There has been conversations about that during the CFAC meetings. And if they get a report and they see something that's questionable, the chair will reach out to finance to get an explanation for that. Or, I don't know, I think even other district staff about it. I think that's been the biggest issue is defining, is that a proper expense? Or is that a, does that fall in line with what the referendum language was? And what is supposed to be spent on versus, okay, that's a capital. That's really, should be a capital expense. I'm not saying that they don't need some direction. I'm saying, check and have a conversation, you can have a conversation with the chair. I'm, I'm saying, maybe we need to schedule that and see what kind of support you and/or CRI can offer them. We've asked for people to join that committee.
We're having some trouble getting members.
Exactly. It's a volunteer committee. They're looking at data and, you know, you have auditors on the audit committee. You're having issues getting volunteers there as well. So it's not, it's not isolated to just the CFAC. We would love to have, you know, CPA and auditors on that committee. That's what it was built as when it first started. I mean, there was some pretty good people on that committee. I, I sat through many of the discussions and the whole alignment. I, I wish some of the old members would come back and support that committee, to be honest. So we could get, dive in more. I mean, they're looking at a, and this is on a ballot this year. So they're looking at it and they've been looking at it. But I think we've struggled through the years on that with all of the people who was initially on there had left and then to the program. So I don't, I don't discount that there should be some, you know, people from audit committee or yourself or CRI, CRI coming in and helping that committee maybe get things going. Like I said before, and I, I won't, I'll defend them, they were able to get the data as easily as the audit committee did. It was, and maybe it is not knowing what to ask. But their focus has always been on the mileage money, totally, that's all. Whether it's a payroll, arts, STEM, any category that's been defined in the referendum. Their mindset is, I want to see where it's all at. The last quarterly reports that they got, two quarterly reports, I think it was, I don't know, Ms. Sellers could tell me, was only through STEM and arts, maybe? It was just the two quarterlies?
Through December.
Right. That was cumulative, but it was not near, the dollar amount at the end of that report was not near what the referendum dollars that collected were. So there's questions. Right, right, so. Right. So, yeah. So having someone coming in and maybe define some of those, what the parameters is of what we can pull would be good. So, yeah, I, I, I think it's beneficial to have somebody there.
Mr. Dye had commented.
He had kind of a point of order. The, I have a concern that the we didn't notice a discussion of CFAC today.
I'm sorry. No, I don't think, I don't think that's your fault.
It's on here, so.
I mean, it's, it's on his agenda, just says CFAC.
Yeah.
But
But the public, I don't think we noticed.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing right before you. So I thought we may be getting too deep into this. I do think that this is a discussion that we have to have. I do think that, I already said it, the suggestion you, you made to have, have an audit firm come in and help them, help with the report is phenomenal. To be honest with you, we've almost done a disservice, if you think about it.
I won't go there. I really won't because these people have dedicated work.
No, absolutely. No, what I mean disservice is as far as us as a board, helping them, suggesting this as a help, right?
Resources available.
It'd be like, it'd be like a car mechanic asking me to come in audit. I have no clue what this or that means, right? And I'm not saying they don't have a clue, but they just, but for us to have, I, 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 I believe it's the same function if we're going to have a cert, if we're going to have the, the sales tax and that's a, that's a, a, a tax we're asking for extra for our, our taxpayers, and we have a firm come in and audit that, why would we not do that for the same thing as the referendum? Now, I'm not saying that there's no, the CFAC should be there to be able to help facilitate that, just like the audit committee is there. And, and that's what I mean by the disservice. Why has that never really been discussed and, and brought up? Having a firm come in and do that, because you're asking folks that, that may not know daily do audit reports and you're asking them to give a report. So, no, I think it's phenomenal, but I do think it's something that we need to put on a, on another agenda to be able to really dive into.
I'd be glad to come back.
But that's great. And thank you very much for, for that. Ms. Foreman, I know had more.
I appreciate that. I do appreciate that.
The medical claims audit report, normally when we get a, an internal audit report, CRI comes in to present it.
They had a conflicting appointment today. At the last minute, Lori says she'd blow it off and come, and I told her not to.
Okay, all right.
I, I understand. We did meet though with the sellers earlier this week, dealing with these issues and making sure that CRI, the district and the audit committee are trying to be on the same page.
No, you, you did a good job explaining what it was and what it wasn't. And I don't know if the board still wants CRI to come in and do a presentation on that report.
We can make them available when you have it on your agenda to approve available questions.
Always have them on the next, like, meeting, come in and do the report and presentation.
When we, when we vote on it?
Come back in.
Okay, all right.
We, we can, Chairman, we just, we left this spot here because the board's direction was quarterly reporting.
Yeah, yeah.
So March had to be the timeline. But yes, we can, we can either do it at another workshop in April or we can do it the night of the board meeting.
And just still put them on the reports and presentations. Okay.
And frankly, the ADA compliance issue is, is a huge problem. Because in order to present something that is ADA compliant, it's, it's not possible on some of the spreadsheets, some of the, the, you know, the data. And whether we have it, and I don't know, and I think we would need to have the attorney follow up on this, would be, Mr. Dye, can you, I just want you to hear this. The, if we have a link to the report and the report itself is not ADA compliant, have we, are we in trouble? Because our website where it says click here is compliant. So, but there are certain things that are just going, not going to be possible to be ADA compliant.
One of the big conflicts we're running into is the Government Accounting Standards Board, Financial Accounting Standards Board, the Securities and Exchange Commission, American Institute of CPAs. Everybody is pushing us as, as, as auditors writing reports to use more visual data, to use charts, to use tables. Because to somebody that is visual, it's much easier for them to perceive and understand the information. And, and the conflict we've been having is if we strip all that out, it's a lot easier to be ADA compliant. But then you've got a huge percentage of the population that you're doing a disservice to because you're not providing the information in the format that the governing bodies are telling you to give it to them. So, I mean, this is where we want some help.
Mr. Dye, are we, do you think, to Ms. Foreman's question, if we had that click here, the visual and all, but the report itself may not be true ADA, are we covered?
I'd be happy to get back to you on that.
Well, I mean, it makes sense.
Well, yeah, because if we say call and, and we'll give it to you and it's not ADA compliant, how is that different from click here and you, and you access a copy?
It may be that it's written and not on a webpage. And if you send a written report to them, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know.
But we need to have, not just for ourselves, but for the district, we need to clarify what we've got.
And you're to clarify, you would, that would, your question would apply to any link.
Theoretically, yeah.
Yeah.
Not just this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
The update to the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four audit plan, you are asking for direction from this board or approve? We don't even have to vote on it because we voted on the engagement letter.
I'm trying to let you see what we're seeing, what's coming back to us and
But switching to, instead of facilities, just switching But switching to instead of facilities, just switching over to pay. Does anyone have a problem with that?
I don't.
You know, the, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, and actually, I think Mr. Rinaldi appreciates that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So, so go for it. And then just want to comment on the engagement letter from CRI and the master contract. That's exactly how Cherry Becker does it. We have a five-year contract and that is what has saved us a lot of money because they did a five-year contract and said, here are here's what we're gonna charge. And we we held them to it. So, yeah, so it's a good thing. So I I'm happy to see that. And and I just want to thank everyone who's on the audit committee, who who does volunteer their time. They were very happy to hear that they may be able to attend virtually as opposed to in person. So we have informed Mr. Daniel that as the chair, he has to be there. So he may be in a room by himself, you know, but, you know, but the but the but the meeting can go on. So that's that's great.
One one thing I know and that you didn't mention it, and I just I wanted to get everyone's opinion on it, too, is the the risk assessment and do we want to wait? Do we want to have CRI do that or you're gonna wait till the new firm comes or it could be CRI, too? After the RFP, do we want to have that then done at that point? My I mean, my gut feeling is if I'm the new, if there happens to be a new firm, I don't want to be held to the risk assessment from another firm. You know, so my gut is let's wait to the new. And if I don't I don't know if that's the audit committee's suggestion. Or do you really have one? Or you're I know you're asking from us. I would say wait. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I agree.
Okay, then we'll direct them in our engagement letter to preparing for us to do do an update, annual update like we've done, the fifth in the five-year plan. And whomever is chosen through that RFQ, RFP, excuse me, is able to start. And the first thing we will ask them to do will be to come in and do that risk assessment starting in that July immediately. And if we get it out in time, they may actually want to come out ahead to look at that before people get away from vacations for the summer.
Great, thank you.
When does CFAC meet again? It's coming up, right?
Yeah, April.
So if if we're going to change the way the June 30th, 2023 year-end report is, do we?
Bless you.
I don't want to send them off on in one direction and then we come in two months later and say, oh, sorry.
I think I'll get a feedback on that talking to the chair.
Yeah.
I think that's the only direction we could possibly give is from your your thoughts and talking to the chair. I think if we really, which we can put like on the next workshop or whatever, to read to open this up and really talk about
Bring us both.
process. That's that that'd probably be the best, I think. But that's not till.
Is it possible?
April.
April, it's it's.
No, I'm saying our next board, our next workshop.
Our board meetings, not till the night, right. Is it possible that I can sit in on that meeting when you meet with the chair? We can probably arrange that. Right. Just get with her and maybe do let's get that on the calendar sooner rather than later because of the April second, third meeting. I'm sure she's got and I know we have spring break, so I don't know if that would be a problem with us meeting during that time. So, yeah, if you could get you have her contact, I'm sure. Okay.
Is the committee gonna be in a position to wrap up the report at the April 3rd meeting?
I would say probably not. I'm not sure. We haven't talked about that report. We've talked about other things, but I have not talked to her in depth about that report, so.
Did you give her a call? Give her a heads up?
We'll give her a call. Give her a heads up. Yep. Okay.
Anybody else on anything else that was brought up?
Thank you all for the time. It took more than we did.
No, no, good.
Thank you so much for everything you do.
Appreciate it.
Enjoy the beach.
All right, let's go ahead and move to item number two, and then I think we're gonna take a break after item number two. Discussion regarding some of our policy changes. So, Mr. Chapman, you're on deck.
Good morning, Board. The last board meeting, you voted to advertise a set of policies, eleven policies to revise. And then there's one new policy. And this is our workshop to work on those policies. If there's any questions or edits, the 30-day window for advertisement started when you approved them at the last board meeting. And then these policies will go in front of you on April 23rd for approval. So this is our workshop to work on these policies. I'll just go through each one. There's eleven and then I'll take any questions or suggested edits. The, like I said, there's eleven. I know we use the term policies. There are two bylaws, kind of all encompassing, all encompassing. So the first is bylaw 0141.2, titled Conflict of Interest. Many of these policies are somewhat minor updates or changes due to legislative changes or rule changes. You'll notice in in this bylaw, we're Neola's suggesting just adding a statute to further outline the standards that we all, well, really, it's a bylaw, so you all are governed by. And the next bylaw, 0166, this again was is an update to a, there was a statute that needed to be updated. The statute went away. It was replaced by a new state statute, so we've added that state statute. Policy 2270, Religion in the Curriculum. Again, you'll see, you know, I have and for the public watching, there's a, what I'm reading off of really is a two-page memo that kind of summarizes the changes that are made to these policies and bylaws. So for those watching the the board workshop, you can you can see this online in the in the board work. Policy 2270, Religion in the Curriculum. Again, this was just kind of a quick edit to just further clarify and 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 like Neola says, avoid any confusion between other policies and just understand exactly what it means and what directs our curriculum department and what we follow when it comes to what we can say or can't say and do when it comes to this topic in our classrooms. Policy 2270, 2271, Articulation and Access to Florida College System Institutions. Again, this is just a technical revision. It was just really to add a rule that came out, the 6A rule. Policy 2460, Our Exceptional Student Education Policy. Again, referencing rulemaking, again, a minor technical correction in that policy. Policy 2623, Student Assessment. Again, another rule making a situation where just some minor changes to that policy. In policy five, some of these you see a lot. But policy 511, 1.01, Homeless Students. There was a from the federal government, just a little addition on what how to define what it means to to be homeless, a homeless student. So that was added to that policy. We, our homeless student population or department follows the federal laws on that. So it just has to be changed. 5780, Policy 5780, Parents' Rights. Again, as the legislature keeps adding and 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 making changes to to state statute. Here again, we're just adding a few additions per, again, some rulemaking that comes out after the legislature does their work. Policy 8330 is a new policy, Student Records. We have we we need to have, we have a student records policy, but we need to have a student records policy, if that makes sense. We we obviously have student records and and this policy outlines the student record so that it's clear in our policy. Obviously, follow state statute, but having something in our policy documents makes sense. Policy 8390, Animals on District Property. There's a very small change to that. You'll notice we used the word, we had been using for years, the word dumb animal to describe what what could be used in our schools. So we we changed that to kind of further update that. And then 8420, Emergency Management. Again, something you see a lot due to a lot of safe school type situations, the rule changes that come out of the legislature. Again, a minor update, talking about making sure when we do our fire drills and security drills that there's after after action reports and just detailing just what those reports should look like. So those are the this round of of edits to our board policies and bylaws. And I'll stop there and take any questions or suggested edits.
The phrase was dumb creature?
Yes, dumb creature. Yes, I called that before, so we're.
I would say, no, it's a non-human creature.
Yes, yes. I I might have on purpose used the language from Seminole County to, they have a very good policy on on this, so I use their language to make sure we're using a better phrase.
Okay.
Than dumb creature.
Yeah. All right.
Are all of these Neola?
For the for the most parts. If the ones in purple, so I would say that bylaw 0166, our general counsel found that that we needed to add at that statute, so that's in purple. The dumb creature, animals on school property was at is is
Our product.
is our edit. So those are the, oh, and and adding, I mean, policy 8330 is not a policy we've made up, but we've we've added that policy. So but that is a Neola policy. So besides bylaw 0166 edit and the animals on district property, those two are 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 edits and the rest are Neola updates, yes.
Anybody else with any questions or thoughts on this? Yeah.
I you said policy 5111.01, Homeless Students. This is a revision of what we have to do on that?
Yeah, it just it just clarifies a little bit what defines
Okay.
a homeless student. If you see the edit, it's it's like describes kind of what the home, the condition of the home and condition of where the student is living. And it's all defined by that federal law. And, you know, our Project Heart Department does a very good job of tracking all of that and working to make sure those kids are taken care of.
The way that's coded in our system is that through Project Heart?
Yes, yes. Yep.
Okay, all right. Because I did read that specifically on how that actually, okay.
Ms. Arcina?
I just wanted to point out that the legal definition of the word dumb means lacking the power of human speech. So that's why those words are in there.
And horses.
And horses. Whole TV show on it.
So those don't qualify.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, Board.
And I think we vote on that in end of April, like the second meeting in April?
Yes. It'll come April 23rd because of the 30-day.
Public hearing. Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm gonna take a recess here. We're gonna reconvene. Let's go 10:30, so 11 minutes. Welcome back, uh, moving on to item number three in the workshop, uh, board discussion regarding policy twenty-five twenty. Uh, Ms. Foreman, this was something that you wanted to discuss, so.
Yeah.
Floor's yours.
And thank you for bringing it back, um, you know, I dare, um, I really appreciate it. And, um, I know we adopted or made revisions to twenty-five twenty recently, and I had, you know, um, I had a slew, a list of, uh, of things I'd like changed, but, uh, with your wisdom, we waited until after legislative session, and there were a couple of things that do affect what we're doing and, um, um, so, and, and I think, actually, I think they're positive, I'm, 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 I'm happy with them. But, um, I don't wanna get into the weeds, don't wanna get into a discussion of, you know, bad books versus good books and literary merit and, you know, that's not, that's not our purpose here. Um, our purpose is the policy. And the objectives that I would like to see accomplished, uh, these are my goals, is to number one, um, tighten up books that are being pulled by the schools without an objection. They call it shadow banning, I don't know if that's the right word for it, but, but, um, because of some of the fear that has come through with, in the last two years, books are being pulled for, um, for reasons that are not applicable to the statute. For example, a book has a gay character, that is not a reason to pull a book, you know, um. So, um, so I'm concerned about that. Um, and that would be something to work on in, um, section, in twenty-five twenty, under, uh, page six of eleven, the obsolete or unserviceable or surplus instruction materials. Um, just, I would like to see that improved. Um, the other is, um, I wanna see books that do have an objection, okay? Um, that they, that we are careful and we have something in policy to say the reasons why the books, why the objection can be upheld. Um, as someone pointed out, sexual conduct, that is not porn. Um, you know, if, if you eliminate every book with sexual conduct in it, um, you'd be eliminating Shakespeare, you'd be eliminating Gone with the Wind, one of my favorite books, um. Yeah, well, Scarlet must have been of a hussy, but, um, anyway, but, but that is, that is, that, that, and, and I've seen, I've read the objections, some of the objections, and some of the objection forms that are coming in are saying things like there's violence, there's profanity. That's not statutorily prohibited, and so we need to tighten up on that. Um, my primary goal is to get parental choice in the policy. The Parental Choice Act, or Bill, when, when you read that part in the statute, it gives parental choice to object to instruction materials, okay? It doesn't say anything about library and that, but, um, parents have always had the ability to object to a book or to restrict a book for their child, okay? We've, uh, and even DeSantis said at his press conference that, um, it's gone too far. And so he wanted to, to rein it back, which is what they did in, in, uh, in the legislature. Now, he hasn't signed it yet, but, um, but parents can make all of, of children, of students who are in the district, who have students that are, that are impacted, they can file objections as many as they want. Now, I think in our last two years, we've had one parent objecting to one book. Um, but all of the other objections, eighty-some odd, are all coming from people who do not, who would not qualify for that, and they would fall under the new provision, that is, that they would only be able to object to one book per month. Um, so I think that takes some of the, uh, the onerous task, um, off. So I was happy to see that. Um, but I think we all, I find it hard to justify anyone telling another parent what their child can and cannot read. It's just unconscionable. And then for that to be happening and books be, being banned or restricted, um, and there is no way for a parent to appeal that. Now, one of the things that DeSantis is doing, or in that new legislation, is that principals, you know, you've got err on the side of caution for the media specialists, or else you're gonna get a third-degree felony. Now, we've got principals, they're saying, he's saying, he's, he's laying the blame at them, that it's gone too far, that if a principal goes too far and restricts a book, then a parent can go to the state and complain and get their license revoked. So it's darn if you do and darn if you don't. Um, so there's a, you gotta, you know, it's really difficult to go right down, you know, hit it, hit it all the way through. So, um, we need to protect the media specialists and we need to protect the principals now. And the way I see doing that, okay, is to stop it, okay, stop banning books, put parental restrictions on it if there's, if there's an issue in it. There are books, you know, and, and again, I've read, I've read the, I've read the objections, there, there are books with, it's sort of like putting a nude scene in a movie, it's like, was that necessary? You know, the book is wonderful, but you got, you know, it's a coming-of-age story and there's sex, a sexual act in there, graphically described. Was that necessary? Well, put it for the parent to make that decision. And so if you put a restriction on it as opposed to pulling the book, um, it's still available and students can get their parents to, you know, to make the approval on that. Um, parental approval has gone all over the place across the state, you know, where you know, parents have had to sign a form to opt in to let their kids use the library. That's excessive. They've had, you know, we've always had where parents can say, you know, no, don't let my kid use the library, where they opt out. But, um, we've got to, for the sake of our staff, for the sake of our student, or for our teachers, for the sake of our principals, um, it's time to rein it in, and the happy outcome as far as anyone filing an objection for them is getting a book pulled. If the worst that's gonna happen is it gets restricted, that kind of takes the joy out of it, you know? So, or certainly discourages it. So that's what I would like to see, I have a, you know, a, um, and I had this last time, I, a, something that, that we put in the policy that says the board or the district, school district recognizes a parent's right to determine what their students are reading, I've got, uh, yeah, I, I, let me read it, I, I read it the last time, too. State in the policy that we recognize parent rights to determine the materials that their student accesses. Accordingly, preferred outcome is a restriction rather than discontinuing the item. And I had really hoped, after we revised twenty-five twenty this last time, and the, um, and Mr. Jensen had a meeting with principals, that we would start seeing more restrictions rather than pulling. But in actual, you know, I got, I got the, um, reports and the letters from, from the principals, and unfortunately, it didn't happen, and I still don't understand why, um, unless this is not conveyed to them, that it is a preferable outcome, there, you know, and, um, and I think it's gonna take us having a policy that that is the preferable outcome. If a book is truly, truly horrible, okay, um, first of all, I think it's already been, been pulled, but, um, and so we've got those out of there, but, um, then that is the time to actually do a much more detailed report of why and which, which provisions in the statute of why it's being pulled. Keep in mind that pornography is defined under, under the Miller test to be for, it's, it's supposed to be to, you know, to, to, to get the reader excited, okay? I don't, I, I can't put it, don't, don't make me go further than that, but, um, uh, a lot of these books, um, they are, there's sexual abuse in them, there's, um, there are descriptions that are certainly not, don't meet that test, that are not pornographic, they're, they're, but to say that we can't have a book for high school students that talks about sexual abuse or talks about, um, date rape, um, that's a, uh, I don't think that fault, I'm not gonna get into statute, but that, um, the world is not a pretty place, and books help people who are experiencing very difficult situations to know that they're not alone, to know how to, how to handle it. So, um, I wanna put it back in the parents' hands, you know, if, uh, if a child wants to check out this book, and it's gone through the objection process, and the principal has said, I have read the book, which the objector doesn't always read it, um, and I, I think it should be restricted. Um, I, that is a better outcome for everyone. For our people, our staff, our principals, our students, um. So that's, that's my number one thing that I wanna get through here. Um, last time we talked about who's responsible and the sunshine law, and I'm not gonna go into that today because I think by having principals, you know, be the sole decider, I don't think, you know, I have opinions on that, but the fact that they, they, they're on the line now, um, just gives us more reason to implement a restrict-not-ban policy. I had asked Mr. Dye, um, because something is not provided in statute, in other words, there is nothing in statute that says you can restrict-not-ban, does that mean we can't adopt that policy? And as long as it's not illegal, you know, um, I, I think, you know, it's certainly for, something for him to consider and to advise us on. The other is, the last thing is, is that there have been books that have been removed and are restricted that, as the law has evolved, including the Department of Education's rules, that probably, as of today, would not be banned or restricted, and/or restricted. But they, but they were at that time for various reasons. And, um, we need to have, and I would prefer to see it in a separate policy, a procedure to allow parent, um, to allow books to come back in in certain circumstances. And I don't know how, what it would be, and, you know, um, you know, there are districts that have had community members come in and do like a book club, you know, they sit at a table and they all go through the books and whether they're going to, um, to, you know, to approve them for banning or not. And, um, that's one, there, there are a lot of ways. But the other thing I wanna point out is our 2520. There are, there are two in, in the statute that it refers to. There are two components of 2520 and two components of, I forget what the statute number is, that one part is the instruction materials in a classroom, okay? And the approval process on that and the, and the policy and the, and the procedure to object to it. And then there's a separate one that talks about library books. And I think the law and the root, teaching through the Department of, Department of Education has become muddled between those things. And I would like to see us look at our 2520 and break it out. If we have to do a separate policy, fine. If we have to do, you know, big lines, you know, whatever, something to break it out. What are we talking about here? Are we talking about instruction or are we talking about media? And, or library books? And, um, because there are different rules on it. If it, if it's, if it's in the classroom library, that doesn't mean it's part of instruction. It, it's just available for self-selected reading. And we're not clear on that. And I also am not even sure that the statute that we refer to on our website, when we say, you know, according to this, this is how, the, the process, I think we were, I think we're referring to the wrong part of the statute. I think we're referring to the instruction, not the, not the media. So I would like to see 2520 tweaked, um, in that regard. And I would like to see a separate policy, how books are reconsidered. Are they dead for good forever? Some districts are saying, uh, four years. And I think that was under a, possibly a new board coming on, you know, new boards in four years. But, um, that's kind of a goofy way to do it, too. Go to jail, go to book jail for four years. So that's, and just what I, what I am, what I am proposing, the next steps, and the next step would be, I would really like to have an opportunity to sit down with whoever Mr. Jensen wants to point out and hammer this out and then bring it back to the board, including suggestions. And I'm open to all suggestions on how to reconsider some of these books because I can tell you, and I have read some of them, that, um, shouldn't, shouldn't be banned, you know? One of them, one of them was, um, a, a book, it was, it was a very dark story. I did not enjoy it at all. But the only sexual or gender reference was that the girl in the book was transgender. It was a dystopian novel. And, um, and her parents were supportive. They, you know, it's part of the character development. There was no sexual activity, no, nothing. That was totally irrelevant to the story. It was, it was truly character development. That should not have been banned, based on that. And I go back to Christian the Hugging Lion. That was a shadow ban, that was not an objection. But that was a case where it was two guys living in an apartment in New York and they adopted a lion. And the fact that two men lived together was a concern for the media specialist and she pulled it. You know, Bert and Ernie lived together, you know? Felix and Oscar lived together. It doesn't, you know, it's, it's, it's gotten to the point of fear overtaking what decisions that are being made in our libraries. And that's where I am.
Thank you. The board members' comments, thoughts?
I have a couple of legal questions.
Yeah.
And I, um, I'm hoping maybe you can help. If, and, and the board has to decide whether they wanna take up some of these ideas or whatever, but if the board were to say, "We'd like to consider updating or creating language to allow previously banned books, not books that were removed, but ones that were objected to and then removed." The ones that were pulled, but not, maybe I need to make sure I understand correctly. The ones that were pulled, let's say, the principal said, "Yeah, I don't want that book," but it never went through a full objection process. They just said, "I'm just gonna take it off." That's different to me than one that was objected to, went through a full process and then removed. If it was fully removed through a, a objection process, not just taken off a shelf by an employee, is there a legal mechanism to allow that back in? Is there a process already in law? Is that allowed? I guess that's, that's my, I, I don't, I don't, I, I guess I'd like to understand that part first.
Excellent questions. One thing that I'd wanna point out, just so it's clear, there is a policy that I think is relevant here, which is Policy 7300, which talks about property custodianship. And it specifically says, regarding the responsibility of the principal, "The principal of each school shall be the custodian of all property located and charged at the school." So pursuant to that authority, your principals have the right to determine what property they have and it's under their control and power. So to the extent that a principal on their own is examining a material and saying that this isn't appropriate, regardless of whether an objection is brought in or not, you've given those principals the authority to have, to make those decisions over the property within their walls. Now, with respect to a book that has been challenged or objected to, or I, I, I'm gonna actually walk that back. I'm not gonna say it's a book because the statute uses different language. And this goes to your point, Member Foreman, when you talked about the confusion between instructional material and books. The statute itself doesn't actually refer to books. It refers to specific material. It's using a more broader term because it, I think what the legislature was trying to do is, we're not just concerned about books, we're concerned about audio material. We're concerned about a video. We're concerned about any type of media, any material that may be within the realm. I mean, it, it could be an audiobook on a computer. You know, anything that is within the realm that that school is using or has in their custody or control, any of those can be objected to pursuant to the policy. So not, not just a book. And I hope that answers your question and the distinction to some, to some degree.
I was using it generically.
Okay, but the, the step-
But our policy does actually use that language.
Specific material, yes.
Instructional material, in classroom, made available in the school or classroom library, included in reading us blah, 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 blah. And it cites the law, but it does actually say specific instructional material.
Right. Well, there, and, and I think later in the objection process, it talks about the, an objection to specific material, I believe. So I'll defer to Mr. Jensen because it, because you have to actually indicate what type of material you're objecting to on the form itself. You have to identify, am I, am I objecting to a book? Am I objecting to an audio? Is it a DVD? You know, is it a recording? You know, what, you know, what, what is it? So it's broader than merely books. But the statute, as written in its current form, does not contemplate a process by which you can essentially reconsider the decision to discontinue and/or restrict a book that's already gone through the process. And I, I'm, although this board may choose to develop such a process, I wonder how we can reconcile that with the statute in its current place and how the DOE would expect us to report that or be accountable to them. These are all kind of unknowns. And I imagine that the legislature is seeing what's going on throughout the state and, and if they feel that there's a need to create some reconsideration process, they'll do so or will get some guidance from the DOE. I'm, I'm optimistic. But I, I, I think the, that's not contemplated here by the statute. And so it's gonna be very tricky to try to reconcile how that would work.
We would still have to, in reconsidering a book, use current statute.
Absolutely.
Current.
Absolutely.
Not, not talking about, you know, before, before they monkeyed with something. So, yeah, you know.
Could we pose any changes? And once again, this is dependent on whether the board would even be in favor of this. We haven't talked about it, so I don't know. But what if we were to pose it in the sense of, as Mrs. Foreman has explained, the law has changed.
It's evolving.
It's continually evolving. And because of that, we would like this process. And could we do it in that sense? Could we say, "We recognize that the law is continually evolving and because of that, we would like a reconsideration procedure"? Or will that just lead us down some? I, I have other, like, issues with it in a operating sense, but I'm not to the operating part yet, I'm at the legal part of it.
You're at the policy decision.
Yeah, 'cause the, the operating part, like, I think actually this is gonna become a, a real mess for the district to have to deal with this. It'll just be back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. That's my, that's a whole operating issue, but I wanna talk about the legal issue of it first. And if we were to pose it in that way of, "Due to this changing, we would like a reconsideration procedure," is-
That is what I meant when I said, "How are we gonna reconcile?" Because from an operational standpoint, if we have a book that has already been removed and then we do a reconsideration, we could end up in a complete cycle where every other month, the book is being challenged and reconsidered and challenged and reconsidered and challenged and reconsidered.
How you develop the policy.
I, 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 that's, but that's the operational side. I wanna know the legal side. If we were to actually create something that said, "Due to this, we will reconsider," would that put us in legal peril?
The problem is, I can't answer that question without knowing what procedure we would actually implement from the operational side and how that would interplay with the law. And so until we have that entire plan or proposal, seeing and evaluating whether or not we think it will hold up to scrutiny in the courts is hard to predict. But the fact that there isn't anything in the courts or in the statute now that contemplates that makes it even more challenging.
I'd be happy to work with, uh, with, with-
I think we have to see if the, there's the majority of the boards in favor of that. But I just wanna go through the things that you listed.
Can I just make one more point?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, since you brought up the Miller Test. The Miller Test related to obscenity, not pornography. And specifically, just 'cause you brought it up, it's a three-point test, whether or not it appeals to the period interests when taken as a whole, involves or portrays patently offensive sexual conduct and overall does not have serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. I just wanted to kind of clear up that. It's a good point that you brought up, but to the extent that there was a little bit of misconception about what the Miller Test pertained to, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. Sorry, thank you for allowing me to wrap up.
You had proposed specific language about saying, like, the board, the board prefers, um, restriction over removal. Where, if you, we were to add that language, where would you recommend adding that? 'Cause I have an idea, but I was just curious if you had it.
I, no, I did not have a, I'm, I'm sure I could find a place.
I'm sure you could find lots of places. You put it multiple times in bold. I, I like that idea personally. That's just, I mean, you, we're gonna, I guess we're gonna all speak about our opinions of the, your ideas. I, I like that idea. I think that, that is how I feel. I, as a parent, should have a say, you know what I mean? Like, if I want my daughter to read that book or not. And, um, so I'm totally in favor of that and I think that putting that in here would probably be benef, I believe it'd be beneficial because I don't wanna get into where we're doing operations, so that concerns me about some of, some of the stuff. But I think that statement sends a message without getting into the operations of it, without getting into the nitty-gritty of it, and instead says, "No, this is our preference. This is what we believe because we believe the parent should have a choice." It's gonna be in a back room or a shelf or whatever, however they're gonna do it, but me, as the parent, gets to say yes or no. That happens with other materials, like a movie, like, hey, if we wanna show this movie, like, you have to ask me. That happens with, like, if my child needs to go to the clinic, like, there's a paper we now have to fill out, thanks to the state legislature, that says, "My child can go to the clinic and get medical." Like, are you gonna be able to put a bandit on my child without that? I don't know. So like, I don't understand why that would be a problem, like, a parent should have a say. And I, I don't know if it should be book-specific or library in general-specific. That is, once again, an operations decision. However, I do like the idea of at least sending the message of, "We prefer you restrict, so it's age-appropriate, and allow the parent to have a say." And if nothing else, adding that, I think, I believe would be beneficial and I would be in support of that, finding the appropriate place to put it, I think, and the best way to explain that. But I'm, I totally support that, I completely agree with it. I really believe that's the best decision for parents and families. Going through your list, tighten books pulled by schools without objection. I believe that it's the school's principal's job to determine what should be in their school, like, as she said, they, this is their, they are the CEO of that school, they are running that business, and it falls on their shoulders. I would, I want them to know they're supported and I want that communicated in every way possible, "Hey, we support you." And I think that language of, "We prefer restriction over removal," might send that message. But I, I don't want to limit what a principal is able to do because that's their job. And, gosh, don't we, aren't we frustrated when the legislature people that have no idea what's happening in Manatee County tell us exactly how to do something? Like, I don't know, school start, start times or how much we can spend? I, I mean, like, do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
I don't want to be that person because every school is gonna be different. Even like, our schools in different communities have cultural differences. There, I, I don't, I am not interested in dictating on high how a principal should run their school because I don't think that's fair to our principals. And so we trust them. And so I'm not really interested in doing something that further restricts them in doing their job.
May I say something on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Our current policy says that instruction, to obsolete, unserviceable, or surplus in- says that instruction, to obsolete, unserviceable, or surplus instruction materials, they may become obsolete, unserviceable, or surplus as follows, when they are replaced by newly adopted materials after the condition of the materials make them warranted or unwanted. That is, that's it. So, if a media specialist says, hey, you've got two guys living in an apartment here, that's not under the definition of either of those. But they also, uh, there are other reasons to pull a book, such as circulation data, they're not being checked out anymore. The, uh, the age of the book, um, the relevancy. I know that there was an objection filed to a poetry, Allen Ginsberg poetry, and that was... Mr. Jensen disagrees with me on that, that, you know, but, uh, but that was back in my hippie days. I mean, that's a long time ago, uh, so I don't-
You were a hippie, huh?
-relevant to our kids anymore.
Do you get pictures of the hippie days?
I'll pay money.
I do, I do.
You know what? AI can make those. I don't need your-
Thank you, thank you so much. So, um, but, you know, so there's, there are more reasons than what we have in our policy of why to pull a book out. And so, for... I just think we, we need to enumerate them, and also to have the reason it's pulled documented, which we've been a little iffy on in the past.
I guess this goes back to your point about instructional materials versus, like, media materials, right? Because that actually seems like it is more specific to instructional materials, but then it does kind of get lumped altogether at the back, so I-
Maybe it needs, i- if the policy gets broken out between the two, there's, there's a county, I forget who it is, but they actually have two different policies, one for instructional materials and one for media center materials.
I actually think that'd be beneficial to the community, because I don't think, in my experience, I don't think the community in, as a whole, really understands the difference. And there is a significant difference. So, I, I think that'd be beneficial, but, um, I am not a wordsmith, so that's, I'm just putting more work on your plate. Okay. I'm trying to look through everything else. Parental choice, reasoning for removal of books provided to parents. Now, you're, you're asking, so you're asking that it's not just the ones that are formally objected to giving reasoning, which, um, is one issue, but also any book that's pulled, or any material, material, that's pulled? That there be a reason listed on the website for every single item?
No, no, not on the website, but just that they have a doc, have a doc, have a reason, so that if somebody wants to know, I think you do that now, yeah, but, but you didn't in the past.
Right.
Just, but it's not in the policy. So...
But because that's really, that's an operational decision.
Yeah, well, the whole thing is, is operational. We are asked to put a procedure in a policy. We're not asked, we're required.
I know, I know, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we do get into the operational piece of it because of that.
You want to add something?
Is there something you want to?
Uh, just to, um, provide some context around the specific conversation. You know, as, as you mentioned, Ms. Foreman, we have, you know, school media specialists and, um, you know, kind of going through our media collections and teachers, through their classroom libraries, et cetera, et cetera, on a regular basis, um, looking at old, outdated, no longer relevant, but, you know, and, and honestly, for all kinds of different reasons, they can choose to weed books from their collection or other materials from their collection. I think currently in Destiny, and this isn't including Beanstack, this is just what's in our media centers, we're at about 700,000 cataloged, um, pieces. So, if you think kind of like, you know, if we do, uh, if we cycle those out even every 20 years, that's tens of thousands of records potentially being turned over in a year, which we'd have to kind of catalog the rationale behind each one for. So, I just want to make sure, as we're, we had the conversation, we kind of think about the volume of materials that, you know, collectively our schools have in their media collections as they work through these processes annually.
Are, are you saying that they don't, they don't put a reason for their, for it now?
Um, I'd have to pull the Destiny reports to see kind of how it looks. I mean, we can pull weeding reports and see what's been removed from the media collections, and it's just like any other inventory system.
Right.
I'd have to see kind of the extent to what we capture.
Yeah, it just, it just have a checkbox, you know, which, which reason, you know, is obsolete, it's, whatever, whatever the reasons are, but fear is not one of the reasons.
Ms. Messenger, were you-
No, she had something she wanted to add, I-
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to touch on the discussion about adding that there would be a preference for restriction over removal, and I'm a little concerned about that, because the statute is pretty clear that the options are that you shall discontinue, remove or discontinue, and the use of the word discontinue contemplates that discontinuance may be at certain grade levels, obviously. But I think if you put in your policy that there is a preference, the board is essentially kind of putting their thumb on the scale and exerting some sort of pressure on staff or the committee or what, whoever you designate if the policy were to change, but right now, the decision-makers, there's already kind of a thumb on the scale saying, this is where we want it to go. We want there to be a preference, and I'm concerned that that's in conflict with the statute, that there can't be a preference one way or the other, that you simply have to follow the statute. I know that's not the answer you want to hear.
Well, and you're good at that. The, uh...
Legal.
The, uh, the fact that we are putting restrictions on books, that's not in the statute.
It, it does contemplate restricting it, discontinuing the use for any grade level or age group for which the use is inappropriate or suitable. So, that's in the statute. The statute contemplates discontinuing it for a group of your student population based on the book. So, that is contemplated, but they, they don't, you can't, I, I, I don't see language that says I, that we're comfortable having in our policy preference. You know, we just simply have to follow the criteria that has been given down to, has handed down by the legislature and DOE by extension. And if it meets the criteria, it meets the criteria, but I, I, I fear that there's a risk. If you, if you express a preference, then you're kind of putting your thumb on the scale and you're telegraphing to that principal what you want to see, and then you're impacting their independent judgment on each material that's potentially objected to.
What if we said something along the lines of, instead of using the word preference? What if we said something along the lines of, when applicable or when possible, the board accepts the opportunities or possibility to restrict rather than remove books? Doesn't say a preference, it just acknowledges that that option is available and the board is fully accepting of it.
I think it could be wordsmithed a bit, and maybe-
I'm not too dirty, yeah.
I think if, I think if you were to say something in the policy about reminding the, um, individuals tasked with the analysis, that discontinuance at certain grade levels when, you know, deemed appropriate is an option. I think if you characterize it in a very, in a more, um, vague and just reminding them that that's there, but candidly, you're, the folks making these decisions know that. They know they have those options. It's laid out in the forms.
But if our policy says that we recognize the parent's right to choose the materials, or to, to choose the materials that their student will have access to as a lead-in to that, that is kind of a heavy reminder.
Those rights are tempered, though, with the rights of the principals in terms of what books they keep in their library.
No, the principals get their right from our policy. Parents should, are getting their, their rights from statute parental choice.
Dr. Wise, I wanted to-
And we can always change policy, too.
This is a very thoughtful discussion, board members, and we're taking notes in the event. There's consensus for, you know, the staff to try to do some work, um, on the policy. I, I, I was thinking, you know, when, when I interviewed with you almost a year ago, I said, you know, we, we're going to, as a staff, we're always going to follow the law, and then when there are things that are unintended consequences, we're going to, we're going to talk about those, too. And I think some of this discussion is what we wish the statute said, or what we would like in terms of additional flexibility that, that really isn't there, because back to Ms. DiAgostino's point, the statute uses the term discontinue use of the material for the grade level or age group for which it's inappropriate. So, if, if the principal is finding that in their review, they, they, they have to go with a discontinue finding, where, I think where you start talking about, you know, are there, you know, are there other things we can put into place? Well, I mean, there could be a material that a principal says, I really don't think that ninth graders should be looking at this, but, but I'm okay with a junior or senior reading it, so I, I think it's inappropriate here, but appropriate here. That's where you, you actually do have to put some of these other frameworks in place, right? Because if it's discontinued for nine and 10, but it needs to be available for 11 and 12, you need a, you need a mechanism for that to happen. And, um, Mr. Jensen and I worked on that a little bit in our last district in terms of coming up with a procedure where the principals could draw those distinctions. But, you, the, the, the statute doesn't contemplate, whether it's a principal or a committee, a conclusion that this is inappropriate, but we still want to have a parental consent procedure. If it's inappropriate under 106 dot 28, it's discontinued. I mean, that, that, that's what the statute says. So, I think, you know, there, I think there's a couple directions that, that we could go in. We could talk about those kind of, maybe they're edge cases, where within a, within a school, um, and again, the same thing could be true at elementary, right? Because you have, you have five to 11-year-olds on a campus. You could say, this isn't okay at K through 3, but we're okay at 4, 5. Then you're, you're going to have to have a checkout procedure, right? Because you just can't let a fourth or fifth grader walk around with that book and, you know, show it to students in grade levels where it's, where you've discontinued it. So, that's, I think, in those edge cases where you can, where we can put some procedures together that then would acknowledge that there are times when a, a, a checkout with parental consent, you know, and taking the book home to read or whatever, might, might be appropriate. But I, but I, I do think the way the statute reads, we don't have as much flexibility as maybe any of us, all of us, a few of us, whatever, would like us to have. And, 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 and that's my concern. Also, just want to talk a little bit about, about the, again, the role of the principal. Ultimately, nothing gets ordered in a school without the principal's sign-off, right? Because they, they are financially responsible for those accounts. So, you, you're not ordering materials without a principal's okay. And, and, and so I think, you know, again, this notion of the principal's in control of their inventory, the principal's in control of the operation of their school. Frankly, our, our principals shoulder a far greater responsibility than this one specific duty, everyday safety, security. And so, um, and, and so, um... You know, I, 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 I just think that's a really important element as to why we got to the last draft of 2520. If we're trusting our principals with the safety and security of children, I think, I think we can trust them with this process. I think since the 2520 update came in, and Mr. Jensen can speak specifically, um, to this, but, you know, we've had a handful of objections come in. The principal's been, uh, been assigned to it, they've read the book, they've sought out either legal assistance or staff assistance where it's needed, and they are documenting to the page number what they see that matches the statute. And so, I don't know if, again, ultimately, board give us, you know, if, 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 if there's consensus today, well, you know, we, we can work on changes, you know, or, or proposals or whatever. But the other piece of this is, this may be something, after the dust settles, as we get technical assistance, as we see, you know, are there going to be any additional, you know, changes to state board rule or whatever? Is this something for your legislative platform next session? If you, if you want a reconsideration, um, procedure put in place where, where we're, where we're not taking on all of the risk of that, of, of that type of decision, that may be another way to do this. Just some thoughts.
Thank you.
I, I mean-
You have more?
I have more.
Okay.
Just, I did not get the impression that what Mrs. Foreman was suggesting was that a book that would legally be removed, but that, that does actually violate the law, to still be allowed. What I got the impression was that you felt as if there were books that should not have been removed, did not necessarily meet that, and it was because of concern that it was removed, not, not necessarily that it actually met the, the legal threshold. And that your idea was to allow a parent to say, okay, that has a transgendered character in it, and I'm okay with my child reading that. That, that was my understanding of, of what you're asking there. Of course, if it does not, if it violates the law, I don't think you're advocating to keep it in the school. Like, it violates the law, it violates the law. Am I understanding you correctly?
That's, that's, that's correct, but I think, uh, determining whether it violates the law is a, it's not always black and white.
I don't think it is. I think that's purposeful.
Yes.
Okay, so, just to summarize my feelings, so that we can go around and try to see if there's a consensus to move forward with anything. Separating the two policies so that one is about media materials and one is about instructional materials. I guess, um, I like that idea, but it is all in one. So, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Jensen, what's your opinion of that? Do you believe they should be separated, or do you believe that they should be as it is in one?
I believe, um, either one could work for the staff. I, there are some districts that have them combined into one policy under 2520. There's some districts that have them broken apart. I believe Neola has both versions.
Do you? Has it been your... Do you feel like you have noticed that there is confusion between what is an instructional material versus what is like a media, um, supplementary, other kind of material?
I think anytime we're talking about the totality of things in a school's inventory, it is easy to conflate those two things.
It is.
And I, and I believe some elements of 2520 kind of span both sides of those things.
It does.
So, I would say, you know, both approaches have their, their merits. But I believe either one is, is feasible, and it's whatever the board would believe.
Okay.
It would be most transparent to our community.
Okay.
Can I just add to that? My, because I do have a preference. I, although, again, we can, we can make anything work, I think there is merit to keeping it one policy, even if we maybe change how the sections or headings are labeled. Because if you're a, whether you're a staff member or a member of the public, if you use the search feature and you're looking for a term, you could end up reading one policy and not realizing that there is another policy. Neola, um, actually has some templates where there, there end up being three or five, maybe even four instructional materials policies. And again, in, in my last district, because I, I had direct responsibility for this, we merged it all to a single, because especially when you're an employee and you're, you're researching stuff, you're responding to parents, it's very easy in that, in that system to miss that there's another policy. And so, we consolidated them. I, I do think that with the headings, we probably could more clearly delineate which is which. But, but I just think for the ease of people looking at this, and it's, again, it's, it'd be a member of the public, but it'd also be, again, a very busy principal who sometimes is at lunch duty trying to look at something on their phone. I think it's easier if it's all in one.
I think that's a fair point. So maybe perhaps not separating, but finding a better way to maybe explain the differences or separate them out. There is a separate heading that does say, like, used in classrooms, made available. Like, it does, like, separate it, but I don't feel like that's, like, if I was a, if I didn't understand the difference, I'm not sure I'd understand the difference. Do you know what I'm saying? So maybe that's a better way to go. So, so to be clear, I'm, I'm in support of that. I am also still in the, in support, even though it obviously would have to be wordsmithed. I am in support of, um, finding a way to highlight the option to restrict rather than ban. I, however we could wordsmith that, I'm open to options. I like that idea still. I don't want to put my thumb on the scale. I, I would actually like to put my thumb on the scale, but I can't. So, um, I'd like to at least make sure that it's clear that that's an option. So I like that idea. Bringing back removed books that were not part of a formal objection. Here's another question. Sorry, I'm, I feel like I'm taking a long time. Here's another question. Does that happen? If the prin, if they, let's say the principal removed a book, but it was not, it never went through the formal objection, because the formal objection process, I feel like, once that's done, I, we can't do anything about that. I don't like it, but I don't think there's much we can do about that. But if it didn't go through that formal objection process, and a principal said, you know, this book, I'm not sure, and I'm gonna err on the side of caution, and I'm just gonna take it off the shelf. If that happened, but it was never a formal process, can the principal, does, is the principal aware that they can bring it back if they'd like?
Yes, it's one of the things we've talked about with principals. As you identified, those are two very different processes.
Yes.
You know, a principal could decide, this book is not right for my collection at a school, at school A, but a principal at school B views it as right for their collection. So just because the principal at school A removed the book, it would not prevent the principal at school B from purchasing it. It's not documented or reported to the state like the formal objection process.
Okay. As long as the principal is aware, like, that's, you know, you can reconsider that, or-
And there is no, there, you know, the course of the, like, normal weeding process, or if a principal says, you know, this book isn't right for my collection for whatever reason, those aren't kind of centrally aggregated and, like, disseminated as, as some kind of list. That's, that's just a site-based decision.
Yeah. Okay. So I think that sums up my, your points, and trying to make sure I addressed all of this.
Well, no, that, I still want to find a way to reconsider books under the current statute that have been removed.
I just got the impression we couldn't do that from legal.
If it was, if it's not removable now, and it was removed, why couldn't it be reconsidered?
You're talking about one that went through the formal objection process?
Yes.
I guess I got the impression that we couldn't do that. Because we don't know how we would rectify that or communicate that with the state. Am I misunderstanding?
Well, the fact that it's not in the state statute doesn't prohibit us from putting in a policy that, as long as it's not illegal, you know, or, you know, and it's not illegal to, um, to put it in.
I didn't get the impression that the problem was the legality of it. It was how would you even justify it with the state and explain, like?
Do they have to know?
So at the end of every school year, we actually have to fill out a spreadsheet that's sent to the state identifying those books and the reasons they were removed.
Well, you have an accounting method where you just put a minus, you know? You know, that you're, you're taking it back from a prior year.
Trust the CPA to come up with that. Am I misunderstanding your point that, that is there a legal way for us to add into our policy that if something's been formally objected to and then removed, that we can have a reconsideration procedure that would still? Is that, is there a way to do that? Am I understanding?
My best answer to you is, I don't know. Because I'd have to see the language that's contemplated and then analyze that in comparison to statute and try to figure out whether or not that would withstand scrutiny or be deemed inconsistent with state law. It's hard for me to think of every possible way that we could develop something, but I, I do think that it's, it would be a big challenge.
I just think it'd be a big challenge operationally, too. It's okay, I'm-
Well, no, we'd have to find a way to, you know, it's not a back and forth. It's a, you know, yeah, no, I agree.
Ms. Brack, do you have any comment?
I was gonna wait till everybody else answered.
Okay.
I'd like to hear what Mr. Tatum has to say here.
You're waiting to everybody else, too?
It's always interesting.
Yeah.
I'd like to, no, wasn't there a recent kind of legal settlement between the state and, uh, how does that impact this? And the reason I'm asking that is, is a lot of this discussion, kind of putting the cart before the horse, maybe, because a lot of that settlement needs to kind of be taken into, into account before we start talking about how to revise. No, yes, or no?
It really doesn't. That, that settlement had to do with interpreting a completely different statute and just referencing what library books in that statute pertain to. So that settlement isn't really relevant to the discussion you're having today about this separate statute.
Okay. So part of this discussion, I think, comes down to, what's the purpose of a, and I choose these three words very carefully, public school library? And there's, there's two ways you can look at a public school library. One is that it's kind of like a public library in general. It's a, it's a forum for all kinds of literature, from all kinds of genres, for all kinds of interests. And it's just a, it's a public forum for people to go and select all kinds of literature from a large, large range. Some may be objectionable, some may not be objectionable, but it's like a public forum for literature. That sounds to me more like a public library or a public bookstore. The point of a public school library is to have material in there that supports the instruction and curriculum that we have in the school. Well, and this, and this Foreman's shaking her head, but that, it's a philosophy talk that we, we, I view it as that is the point of a public school library. And we'll get to decide here, three to two, or four to one, or whatever the, the way we look at it is, is that we only have a limited amount of resources to go out and buy books and things with. So we should be using the limited resources that we have to put in, to put material in our public school libraries, in our classrooms, that supports the curriculum and the instruction that we are trying to accomplish. If a parent says, for whatever reason, I want my child to be able to read a transgender dystopian novel, then said parent is more than welcome to go to Amazon, or a bookstore, or whatever website he or she would like to go to and purchase said book. The idea that we have to use public school resources to buy things like transgender dystopian novels, which I see no, in any way, shape, or form, how that supports the curriculum or the instruction that we're trying to provide in a public school system, it is a, it is a misuse of public school resources to put things in our libraries and in our classrooms that do not support the curriculum and the instruction that we're doing in, in the classroom. There, and there's a large range, I mean, that can, that, what I'm saying, when I say support curriculum instruction, there's a large range. If you, if you like animals, if you like plants, if you like biology, there's all kinds of things for children to go out and read, all kinds of great novels and literature. There's, there's thousands upon thousands of things that we could buy that we could, say, support the instruction and curriculum. But it is not a public bookstore, and it's not a public library. And to use these resources to go out and put things, even if they're not things that some, that some people might consider violate their moral values, if the principal says, like, I've read some of these graphic novels. They're not, there's nothing really, like, purient in there, or sectionably objectionable, or even moral. It's just, I, I, it's just not good literature. And if I'm, if I'm a principal and I look at one of these graphic novels and I'm like, I don't want this in my library. It doesn't support my curriculum. It's not the type of information I want going into my students' heads. I remove it, it's gone. I don't want to have to inventory it. I don't want to have to spend any more resources on it, and I don't want books like this in my library. How they got in there originally? How did, how did a transgender dystopian novel get into our library in the first place? What media specialist went out and said, you know, I think it's a good idea that we put a tr- and, and I, I kind of know, actually.
One of the Newberry Award.
Well, I, I don't really care. That, it may, it may be appropriate for adults. It may be appropriate for a college class on, I don't know, whatever, exploring the sexuality in America or something. A transgender dystopian novel should not be bought with public school resources and put in front of minor children. I don't care what kind of novel it won. You can, I'm sure there are pornographic novels out there that have won literary awards. Shouldn't be in, in our school system. So I'm, I'm not in favor of the parental choice thing because, and I generally am in favor of parental choice and parental rights, but it's not a, parents don't have the right to come and demand, you will have transgender dystopian novels in your library because I want my kid to read that. I want you to, I mean, here's some, here's some, I, you know, in my religious framework, I believe in polygamy. So I want you to go out and buy books on polygamy, and I want, I want my kids to have access to them in your pub, in your public school libraries. Because in my religious framework and world, I believe in polygamy. Got to have a book in there on that. You got to have books on polygamy. You got to have books on transgender dystopianism. How about a book on Islamic Jihad? I believe that in my religious tradition, Islamic Jihad is something that we need to fight for, and I want my kids to be able to read about that and have instruction on that. And so there's books about Islamic Jihad. And, and I have a parental right to say, you get, I want, I want it in my library, and I get the choice whether we can read it or not.
I wonder if I'll give me about what parents can demand to be in the library.
Well, but we don't need to be even putting books on that kind, we don't need to put-
Well, that's a different issue.
Transgender, well, if they're, if they're there, and the principal says, I don't want transgender dystopian novels in my library, whoosh, out it goes. I don't want books on Islamic Jihad, whoosh, out it goes. I, it just goes. And it's, the principals, who are in theory the educational experts in our schools, should be the ones who, who have the ultimate authority to look at a book and go, I think it supports the curriculum and instruction, it has literary value, or it doesn't. They have to spend an incredible amount of time, as Mr. Jensen said, inventorying them, going over them. There's probably far more books than we actually need in our libraries if we really went through and decided what's really good for curriculum and instruction and edifying to the mind of children. So I'm not in favor of the, a section for parental approval or something like that. I would actually encourage, and instead of that, I would actually encourage the principals to say, the board to give direction to the principal, something to the effect of, the books, you have minimal amount of space on your shelves, and you have a minimal amount of resources, find books that truly do support the, the curriculum and the instruction and the general overall lessons of virtue, values that we're trying to instill in the children. And anything that doesn't involve that, get it out of your classrooms and get it out of your libraries so that you don't have to inventory it. And so it really is, what you have available to minor children is focused on what's good for their mind, and what's good for their head, and what's good for their heart, and it supports the instruction in the classroom. So I'm not in favor of the parental approval process. Uh, let's see, what else here? I am, I am in favor of the idea of separating the instructional material section and the media material section. I, when I read through that policy, I too had some confusion. I was interacting with a constituent about that, and she looked at it this way, and I did look at it that way, and there was some confusion there, so that probably needs to be separated out.
I have a question. Are you saying into two separate, or as a superintendent, it's recommended with-
As a superintendent.
Separate headings to really clarify it.
Yeah, as long as it's in, within the same policy.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, let's see. So there's parental consent. I'm in favor of what we just talked about. As far as books, it didn't go through the process, like a principal just said, I'm removing this book. Again, I go back to my point that if he, if he or she does not believe that the book has literary value and doesn't want to keep inventorying it and having it there, whoosh, out it goes. And, and another point that I'll bring up in favor of all this is, let's say we even did have a parental approval process for transgender dystopian novels. So Bobby checks it out. And he, and he takes it to lunch with him, and he has a little reading group. And now he's got a, has a little group of 10 students and reading transgender dystopian novels at the lun, at the lunch table. And, and so Jo, Barbie goes home and says, hey, Mom, we were reading transgender dystopian novel, we had a books, I want to go buy that book. And you're like, where'd you, where'd you get the idea to? Well, it was in the school. Well, I didn't consent to it, yeah, but Johnny checked it out. And we had a little book club at lunch, and we went out and we all sat down and read the transgender dystopian novel together. And that's, that's the exact reason why I'm talking about, is that we don't need to have transgender dystopian novels in our, in our, in our schools. Now, when we get into, and I'll be quiet in a second, but you know, what is, if there's a gay character in a book, should it be? I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm gonna leave these things up to the principal to decide. Does this have, does this have literary value? If there are two guys living in, in an apartment together in New York, I don't know, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're gay. If that's all that was going on, if there's not graphic sexual description of some type of activity between them, I don't know. But leave it up to the principal. It's his or her school, they're the educational experts. They get to decide what has literary value and supports the instruction and curriculum of the students. Not to mention they have limited resources, not to mention they don't want to keep having to inventory thousands and thousands and thousands of articles of media material every year. So did I cover everything here? Just let me go down here real quick, because there was a lot that Ms. Foreman talked about, the recent legal settlement I asked, I talked about. I'm not in favor of restrict versus remove. I, I agree with Ms. DiAgostino that it's either in or it's out. I made the point that a, a public school library is not a public library or a public bookstore. If the law changes, I wouldn't, I would, I wouldn't be against an appeal to books that were removed under old law. So if the law changes, and, and now this, this is the criteria to apply to, apply to books. If the law changes, then, but that would have to be looked at, how we would go. Because that would be in conformance with the law. If the law changes, then there's an appeal policy based on the new law. I'd be willing to consider that. I, I do think the principal should have the ultimate authority. It's his or her resources, time, and they're the, in theory, the educational experts. We have a limited, I'll repeat, we have a limited amount of government funds, and it should only be focused on things that are supporting the curriculum and the instruction of our students. It's not a, it's not, it's not, you know, the Library of Congress with any piece of literature that's available. That's what bookstores and maybe public libraries are for. Those are the comments that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to go now, or you want me to go first?
I'll go. Okay. Mr. Tatum brought up the fact that Library of Congress, upstairs on my wall is a letter from my book from the Library of Congress. As an author, I, I mean, we have gone through this policy tooth and nail since I've been on this board because of some decisions that were made long before, I believe, all of us were here, that materials that were not acceptable got into our schools. Materials that were not acceptable got into our schools. And then, you got to go to. Material versus book. Page one of our policy, I started underlining. Material, 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 all through this. Policy is material, material, books, book is in there, but it's not as. Dominant as material. Adequate instructional material, that's one of the, second paragraph. I'm in line with Mr. Tatum in saying. I would call it marry them together, what is going on in the instructional classroom. Should. Mirror what's in. That's accessible in our libraries. If they're talking about dissecting frogs, there should be a book in the media center about frogs and body parts and that. If they're studying plants and they want to know all about botany, I think it is botany, isn't it, yeah. There's material for that. So, and then two, in our policy. It's instructional versus. Media material, so that would be probably where we should divide out. Policy twenty-five twenty from. Media material to instructional material. Sexual content, I don't care what gender they are, they don't need to be in our libraries, period. It's, I mean, our goal. As a board and everyone here should be the same. We're here to educate students to the best of our ability with the, and be mindful. Of the tax dollars we're given to do that. And that's. What I go back to is back to the basics, our basics is the reading level, our writing level, and our math levels. Reading does not include pornography. And or. Transgender dystopia novels, I think that's the term you used. That's what our goal is, is to teach kids the basics of. To become whole. Individuals. It's parental choice, a parent has a choice to take their child to a library in Manatee County. The, I don't know anywhere that a student, maybe there is, I, I don't want to understate, let me take that back. If a student does not have access to online material. That's up to the family. Because our materials are readily available to that student at our school. If it's not in our school and it's something they want. That's parental right, right there, they have the parental right to go get that material, whether it's online or at a library. We've just beat this policy to death, in my opinion, it keeps coming up. Over one, over one reason or another. I just think that. To Ms. Messengers' point, the principal is basically the CEO of that school. If a book has been. Or any material has been submitted to the district by any member of the community, and it's looked at, and it's deemed inappropriate. That book should be pulled from every. School in our district. That saves the other principal time of reading and to, I think everyone would agree here. We have more important things to worry about right now in the culture of our schools than whether Gone With the Wind is in the media center. I'm more focused on can this child come out of our district with wholesome knowledge. Of how to be functional adults in our community. And that's where I am with that, I am not on staff, and especially the principals, to. Have to sort out that, okay, this student can read that book, but this student cannot, and I think I had the same analogy, Mr. Tatum, way back. Right after I got on this board, about a child being able to have access to a book that. Parent A says is okay, but parent B says no, but friend A and B are sitting in the same room reading it. And taking that home in an overnight stay, I think, I even use that analogy, Suzie can check out the book. Peggy can come and spend the night and they're reading that. And Peggy's mom doesn't know about it, and then comes home and says, hey. She told me all about this, what's that mean? When I go through the schools, I look at the kids, and I don't see them trying to find this kind of material, I think it's brought up more. Here than it is in the schools, to be honest with you, they're more worried about. What's going on with their peers and that kind of thing, and then when I go out to the. Fields where the kids are playing baseball and, and they're doing the ROTC. Marches and the tennis matches are going on, and then you've got another group of kids over here. I just think that putting too much pressure on here, on, on our staff by bringing this policy up. Multiple times, just in the year and a half that I've been here, I think maybe, yeah, we could probably wordsmith it to make it more. To separate it a little bit, I would be in favor of that kind of thing, of, okay, this is. Instructional, this part of the policy, and then this part would be media to include classroom. Libraries that are in, inside, so I would go to that, but I, I'm with legal, if legal says. This is what we have to follow, and that means. That we are not going to allow any kind of. Sexual content. In these books. You know, that's just, that's just the way I feel, I'm in line more with Mr. Tatum.
Thank you. So I'll just be real quick and brief about this, I, I. This policy is what it is, and I think that it is not, I think it's too early for us to, to try to change anything, when the legislature's just ended. Bills haven't been signed, the DOE hasn't said anything. I think it's, it's not in the best interest of our district, meaning our staff and personnel, et cetera, to make any changes to any kind of policy that we know is touchy like this. That we're a week or two off of session, the DOE hasn't been able to make any kind of changes or anything like that. If laws change, absolutely, we got to adapt, I do agree with this foreman, we should probably separate this inside the one policy, but let's separate it, it is, it is a little. Convoluted at times, so I definitely do agree with that. I think that, at the end of the day, to me. We've never once questioned what a principal has not allowed in their schools. In the summertime, when the. Librarian and media center aide, when whoever comes up, the principal says, here's the list of books I want to buy, and the principal looks at the list and says, nope, don't want that one, don't want that one, don't want that one, the rest are good, never once. And I don't know, how many years we've been in existence of public education, we've never once questioned, wait a minute, principal Cho, why didn't you let this book in? We've never once questioned that, and now all of a sudden, principals are allowed to pull books and et cetera, and now we're questioning what they're pulling after the fact that they let it in, well, they could have not let it in from the jump. And we, it's, and we're not asking for a committee in Sunshine to review what the principal didn't allow in from the very beginning of the year, I just, I mean, at the end of the day, and, and I'll be honest with you. I'm the only one up here right now with, with two teenage kids. They're not getting, one, they're not, they're not. The bad stuff they're getting ain't coming from our public libraries, it ain't coming from our school libraries, it ain't coming from, it ain't coming from Books-A-Million, it's not coming from any of those. So, so, there's a lot more things that we've got to worry about than where they're going to get a book that, that has whatever issues we don't want. And, 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 I, I, I feel like, and I, to almost Ms. Spray's point, I think we've beaten this thing, I mean, this is, this, and that, and. I know there's going to be tweaks and changes, there's always going to be, I think right now our policy is working, I don't, I, I'll be honest with you, I. I haven't heard one parent, one. Child, student, et cetera, and, and I'm not going to sit here and go over the connections, but I've never heard of any, I've never heard this be an issue. Inside our schools, I mean, I've never heard a principal, assistant principal, teachers. Students. And I'm around them, twenty, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I just don't think this is something. You know, but I wanted to make sure we, we, we got it on there to get the discussion again, but I think we've got a good policy where it is right now, I think if things change, and we want to go back and look at maybe books that were in the original, pulled, and, and. Principal can do that, principal could do that right now, the principals can go back and say, man, I pulled XYZ book, I want that back on the shelves, maybe they read an article about how good it is or whatever. I just, the principals have always decided what's in their, in their library bookshelves, and every school can be different. Because the demographics and, and things are different in, in every school, so, a principal's always been allowed to do it, and we're questioning it now, and we've never really questioned it before. So. I do believe that there's other, there's other more important things than, than the books, I do believe that, that the kids that want to read these books. There, there are definitely other places you can go get these books rather than, than our public, or our public school libraries. And I, and I, from an operational standpoint, having it be restricted and going to find it and, and putting it in, it's just. I would love to see data, I would love to see data. On just, on all of this, on all of this, on, on, on. How many times these books are really checked out, and good, bad, whatever, I would love to see how many books are even checked out in our own public libraries, public school libraries. I would love to get data on that, per kid, how many books, I taught for twelve years, very little kids checked books out of our public, out of our school libraries. Now, every school's different, every teacher has different kids, so I'm just telling you my personal experience. I think grades are different, elementary school is different than middle school and different than high school. I don't know. My kids read books, and it's on their phone, and it's on their, I mean, I, you know, not everybody's blessed to have a phone, I get it, not everybody's blessed to have a computer or an iPad and things like that, I understand that. But there is a certain limit, what we, what we should have in our schools, and, and I believe that the principal has that, that choice, and, and. I don't believe there's anything wrong with our policy now, when we moved, and, and there's changes in the legislature, changes in, in what the DOE comes back to us and says we got to do, then absolutely, we got to readjust, I think it's too early to do that now. But I am in favor of the, of the, the, the policy and cleaning it up a little bit, changing it and, and making sure we, we've split it up. Yeah. Anything else?
No, I was just kind of harping on what you said about phones, I was like, man, I wish they did have a book club at lunch, but that's not what's happening, you know what I mean, like, I wish that was what was happening, right, but that's not what's happening, they're all on their phones. Acc, with access to something far more problematic than probably anything that's ever been in one of our schools, and if only it were a book club where they were talking about a book. Also, I want to point out that there is actually standards about coming of age experiences, and so if your theory is that it should match. What should be taught in our classes, I just want to be clear, that that is an actual standard.
Then the question becomes, what does it mean to come of age?
And, and that, I did look, and it does not say one, one, one way or another, whether you go one way or another way, it does, it does not specify that in the standard. Only that that is a standard, and if your belief is, which I'm not a hundred percent sure I even completely share your belief, because I taught in Title I schools, where kids don't have a car, they don't have internet, their parents don't have a phone, they don't have a computer, they have nothing. They live in generational poverty, and their only access to books is in a school library, so I don't think we're ever going to see eye to eye on that. However, if that is your belief, I just want to point out that there are standards where that. Can exist in our libraries, that's it.
So I, I will say to that, your point that you made about. I agree with you, if it's a standard, then the question is, what does that mean, but your second point about the only access that children have to. Books is, that's just not factually correct, there's Soren IV, there's the Rotary Club, there's all of these different ways, there's the New World's Reading Initiative, it's right here.
But the New World's Reading Initiative is a great program, you're right, it mails one book to a child every month. My daughter goes through. A chapter book, maybe, you know, two days when she's really into it, right, so like, okay, but you're right, I love that program, it's a great program, it's only for students that are below reading, reading level. If you are on reading level, it does not provide you the tools that you would need in order to maintain or excel, right, so that affects that, I agree with you on Soren IV as well, once again, you have to have a car or some other way to get there, because that's not. And you're right, the Rotary Club is great, they do deliver books all the time, I completely think that is a wonderful program, but that only exists in Manatee County, not across the state. And that's really unfortunate, that, I know that it's spreading, I'm so grateful for that, that's a wonderful program, but once again, like, that's also a limitation, because it doesn't affect all the students, and yet it affects. Manatee County, and it affects some Title I schools, but not all Title I schools, not all Title I families, specific grade levels, and specific books.
There's plenty of stuff in our, in our libraries that are for children, good stuff for children to choose from.
I'm, I'm not going to debate with you, I, I agree, I think we agree more than we disagree.
Good, so, we could, we could, we could put this pod until we could go on forever, we got a couple more that may go on forever too, so, I just want to be able, let's just, let's just, I, I want to take a, a five-minute recess, and then come back, and we'll tackle four and five. All right, welcome back. Let's move on to item number four, board discussion regarding bylaw 0169 related to public comment by non-Manatee County residents. Ms. Spray, this was one of your topics?
It is indeed. It's my belief that in the past, we have had public commenters coming from other counties that do not have students in our system voice their opinion on our policies. So, I was in the mindset. I'm in, I'm in a mindset that our policies should only allow Manatee County residents be allowed to do public comment on any of our agenda items. And, and/or if somebody comes from out of county, it would be a relative of somebody in our, in our student body. That's basically why I wanted to pull this policy and have the discussion and see where everybody was. Because we have had people come on, and not just the book banners, other policies. I've been out there and saw people come from two, three counties over just to make their points. So, I'd like to amend it to where we only allow Manatee County residents and/or family members that may have a student that attend our school.
So, I think there's merit knowing the county they're in, especially if they're going to make comments about our policies or whatever we're doing. I, I would like to go to legal and just see what can we, can and can't do with any of those type, that type of stuff with public comment.
Pamela has the statute on it. I would just like to start off by saying that it makes great logical sense what you're saying. And in fact, we see some statutes that do limit certain rights to parents or members of the county, like the one we were just talking about. But on public comment, you cannot limit the person from coming in here based on where they reside. It's, it's their right, and we, we haven't seen it in a long time, but we haven't had too many really hot political potatoes in the last year or so. But when we did, we, we did see, you do get sort of these regional advocates come in.
Right, right.
But Pam, Pam's got the statute pulled out.
So, the relevant statute is section 286.0114, which pertains to public meetings, a reasonable opportunity to be heard. And specifically subsection four of that statute says that rule, rules or policies of a board or commission which govern the opportunity to be heard are limited to those that, and there are four categories. Those that provide guidelines regarding the amount of time an individual has to address the board. They can prescribe procedures for allowing representatives of, of groups or factions on a proposition to address the board. So you could, you could say, to the extent that you've got a large group of people, you can limit it and say, I represented it, you know, I represent 50 people. You can put rules and policies about that. The third is prescribing procedures or forms for an individual use in order to inform the board of a desire to be heard. You know, have, like you have right now, the public comment, they fill out their name. You could have a process where they say, I'm in support, I'm in opposition, whatever the case may be. And then the fifth method is to designate a specific, a specified period of time for the public comment. So, there isn't a right in the statute to limit public comment to only people who are residents of the county. Or members of the public who have some connection to the district.
Can we though, like very similar with the public, or the Board of County Commissioners though, do, can we require them to state where, where they're from?
You can ask them, but you can't.
Force it.
Well, you, you, you can ask them.
You can't say, no, you can't talk because you're not going to tell us where you're coming from.
Correct. And candidly, they don't have to be honest with you in their answer.
True.
I mean, you, they, we ask people for their name, and part of that reason is so the minutes reflect who was there and who gave that, that comment. And we can ask them, you know, where they live, but they can conceivably write down, my name is Bugs Bunny and I live at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. They don't have to be honest with you about that information when they come to speak.
So, like the county, when a public commenter comes up, the chair says, state your name for the record and your county resident. We can adopt that policy, but they are not, the public commenter only has to provide their name. But we are, we could still say, and your, and your county resident. And they can offer that at the microphone?
Well, I don't, I don't want to comment on policies or procedures that are happening at the county. But legally, you can ask them to provide their name, you can ask them to provide their county of residence. They are not obligated to provide you either one in order to speak.
And we do now, we, we, they have to give their name in when they sign up, they have to put their name in.
Right.
And so it's in the minutes with, with Ms. Cox, and then, you know, I call it out when their name, when they, when they come up. But the county is not. So my question is, could that be something in our system that you put there? I mean, I'm just off the cuff here, I don't even know if we can do that in the system. I'm looking at Ms. Cox, like she runs, like she.
I think our system.
Like she did this system, she didn't make this system.
I think it only has name right now.
I think it only has name.
Yeah, you're not prevented from asking for it.
That's, that's where I'm going with all of this.
And then, and then it potentially, you could say Chad Choat, Manatee County, you know, you would know.
A lot of times people, to give themselves some credibility, will actually say that.
Sure.
I'm a parent or I'm a resident.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So my question is, does that have to be in a policy or can, I mean, the, put, putting the, I mean, I guess we'd want to make it a policy.
I don't think it should be a policy.
No? Okay. What were your thoughts? Why?
Because it's, we're not entitled to that information.
Okay.
But we can ask for it.
Right.
Okay.
But if you make it a rule, it's, looks like.
Right, now they're breaking.
You're banning somebody or you're, you're silencing them if they don't want to give that information.
Yeah. I'd be absolutely okay to see if we can look, I mean, I don't know about everybody else feels about it. I'd be okay to see, with our system, when they sign up, they can put, you know, whatever county. Now someone physically walks up here and doesn't do it on the computer, no, they're, we're doing all from the computer now, aren't we? When they walk in, they gotta do it from the computer. So.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, correct. Public hearing, we, public hearing, we probably call it from the dais. But if you could look into that, would that be okay with the board to see if we can even add that like a line on there?
It's, I think it's your prerogative as the chair, because when they come up, you say, you know, state your name, you know, and, and they have to state their name, but you can say, just like they do at the county, state your name and county of residence. And, because if they put it on a card, okay, we're not going to know.
True, we don't put like the names up, like I see it differently than, than what, than, but I don't put it up on the board, that's true.
So, yeah, if they're from wherever.
I think it's, my whole thing is, put it on there as an option. If they fill it out, fine.
Yeah, then I'll know.
Fine. And, but also, the chair would say, please state your name.
So, yeah, so I can say, because I think it is interesting to know who it is, but if I see the names and it says Chad Choat, and I, and I did fill in, I'm from Manatee County, I'll be able to say, you know, first up is Chad Choat from Manatee County. And then if Ashley Choat's on there and says, doesn't fill out the county, I can always ask, Ashley Choat is next, can you please let us know what county you're from? And she says no, then, okay, proceed. I mean, you know what I mean?
You can ask for it, and if they don't fill it out, you still let them talk.
Right, correct. Oh yeah, they still gotta be able to talk. Right.
But most people will, if they're from Manatee County, they'll.
I think they're gonna put it on.
Gives them more credibility, I think.
And watching the county commission and even observing county commission. The statute, according to what you read, is applicable to governing meetings, public governed meetings. So, they are not required to ask for the county. They just do that. They don't state, you have to put your county down. They just ask, and people voluntarily will most likely say it. But we can put it and ask for it on the card if we choose to do that. Whether the public commenter puts that down or not is an option.
There's nothing wrong with it.
Okay. That's where I'm going with this. That's why I brought this up. I'm like, okay.
Okay. I'm sure we can add it in, obviously.
Because there are fields for address, they're not required fields when they sign up for public comment.
Oh, there is currently, right now, already on that?
It is there.
Okay.
With county?
This usually says anonymous or wherever, they don't ever, people don't usually fill out where they live, but there are people that do.
Okay.
It is just not a required field.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, but I can't remember what the screen looks like. Name, county of residence, address. That would be my.
Yeah, I think it probably just goes to name, address.
It has full legal name, phone number, mailing address, email address, and the selection for which you would like to speak, and then a specific agenda item.
Okay. So no county line is on there at all?
Go ahead.
I would recommend against publishing addresses because you don't know what individuals might be protected by chapter 119.
Yeah, it doesn't.
But county, county is not given address.
County's fine, I'm, I'm talking about address.
So it could be an option. In my, in my opinion, I would have name and whatever is, what is required. But instead of having address, I would like to have county. And then address, county optional, and then address under that. I think that would be more broad. That way we're not, I mean, if we're collecting that on our system, so, yeah.
And if, and so, Ms. Cox, if you can look into that, and if not, I'm okay with, I'm okay with doing it from the dais, just asking.
Right.
So you would rather have, instead of mailing address, you would rather have county of residence?
County residence. That is, that is my desire, but I see we have a hand up.
I have a question. What's, what's the purpose of having the address? What, how, what is that, how is it used? I mean, I understand the purpose of an email address, because if somebody says something happened and I'm upset that my child's school, blah, 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 then at least somebody from the district can contact them or whatever, like, and the phone number. I get those, but what's the point of the address? Do we use that in any way, shape, or form? Crickets. Maybe we get rid of it and just do county.
I would just put the county. I would just put the county name and county.
Because I, if I'm filling that out and like, I just came to say my three minutes, I probably wouldn't put my address, but I might put one word, Manatee.
Yep.
Well, we do use phone number, like if something changes, we have.
Right.
Well, that's fine.
And that I get, like, I think, I think the phone number and the email address totally makes sense. I just don't see the, I'm trying to understand the purpose of the address. I don't know if I can think of one, that's what I'm asking. Is there a purpose?
Okay.
As long as they're optional, other than your name. You want to put your, your phone number, your county, your email, great, but.
Yes.
Just making a little star by optional, optional.
Yeah, I mean, we, I'll know what they said, whether they're, where they're from or not, meaning so.
Well, I think the star is not by optional, the star is actually by required, correct?
Oh, yeah, the star means it's gotta be.
Right.
Whatever makes it optional.
Yeah. Yeah.
Got you. So, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'll just make one general comment, that is, I would never want to see any restrictions on anybody being able to come up to this dais, whether they're from Zimbabwe or Aber, Aber, you know, some, I'm trying to pronounce, I can't even pronounce the name of the country, I'm thinking. Azerbaijani, I, Congress and by extension of the fourteenth amendment in the Constitution, all sub-governmental organizations shall make no law of restablish, respecting and establishing of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition, let me see what the rest of it says here, I just got the, to petition there, to petition the government for a redress of grievances, so. You may say, well, people from Zimbabwe aren't from America, okay, but I think my general point is that I would, whoever wants to come to that stand and play within the rules that we've defined for public comment, stay within the time limit. To me, anybody should be able to do that, so, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
All right. Um, all right, number five, board discussion regarding method of election of school board members, Ms. Foreman. This was your topic?
Yep, me again. Um. Yeah, I, I want to see if there's an appetite to go back to the way it was. Uh, the last election was twenty twenty where um it was countywide. And my reasoning for that is that it is, it allows every voter in the county access to vote for the, for each school board member. It eliminates the propensity to become territorial on our, on our districts. And um, it just, you know, I think it's far better to let um the voters have a say in each seat on this dais. And the fact that, you know, we've also now got coming up some um some election where um thousands of people are not going to be able to vote for any board member until, for a six-year period. I just, um, so. I've, I've been, I've been advocating for this long before we did the, you know, had, had the last go around on the uh on the districts.
I, I got a couple of questions. So, and we had an, so this was done in eighteen? And it was put out to the, to the, I know we had it in the board docs and I just don't have that up right now. It was done in two thousand.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. But the very, the first election has ever taken place, that it was single-member district, was this past one, twenty twenty-two, correct? That's the very first one. So, my question is, and this probably for you, Ms. Messenger, since you're the only one on the board that was here at the time. What was the reasoning, was it a, was it a, and I guess, Mr. Dye and any, any, and Ms. Yagustino, if you want to mention too, or bring up statutes or laws or whatever, that, what was the reason why it was done in seventeen? It was voted on eighteen, I believe, by the voters. Voters said, yes, we want the single-member districts. And then it was pushed all the way to twenty twenty-two before it was going to be done, instead of like twenty twenty, what was the reason why there was so long in time there? Does that make sense? Because we, because we voted on it, I was trying to get to the supervisor elections, but I didn't get on there in time. We voted on it in eighteen, correct?
Yeah.
So what was the reasoning why we waited so long? Do we have to? I don't know.
No, um, did not have to. It was done that way so that it didn't affect any sitting board members. Like it wouldn't change, like in the middle of their term or anything else, like it wouldn't affect.
I got you, that's why it was pushed out.
Yeah.
So if it was done now, we would be pushing it out still another four, I mean, we.
No, that's a board decision how you want to do it.
Right, I got you, okay.
Um, that's why.
That was why they did it back then.
Yes, and it came about because there were board members that believed that a specifically was an African-American person would not be able to win a countywide election.
So it was never about fin, like financially having to run a campaign for a whole county?
No, that was an added benefit, I think, that was another reason, I think they felt like somebody that was of a minority background would have a, more of a significant struggle because of the financial aspects of running a countywide election is, it's a lot bigger, you have to have a lot more troops on the ground everywhere to run a countywide election than a single district one, and so, um, I would say that the benefits were for the board and not for the community, personally. You can tell where I voted on this one. So I was a no vote, um, just because I felt as if, and I've already seen it happen while sitting here, that it was going to create additional politicization of this board, in which there were people that will fight for only their district. And that's not what we're legally responsible for, or we're legally responsible for the entire county. It's not like the county commission, where they might have their own section, we don't, like, we actually are legally responsible for the entire county. So it always only seemed fair that it was for the entire county and that we represent the entire county. Um, I've lived in three out of the five districts in Manatee County, so I, I'm all Manatee County. And not just one district, and so, um, I think that it adds confusion to voters, the single districts, um, as we've already talked about with the maps, people get confused, people get confused. Even when it was a countywide election, people got confused, because they were like, well, I don't, they, they're used to the county commission where county commission is by district, where we were at large, and then they, I'd say, well, it doesn't matter where, where you live, because you can still vote for me, kind of thing. But it, it creates confusion, because you can, you don't have to say, well, if you live here or you live there, it's like, no, you can. Everybody gets a say, you know? And um, I, my other concern back in the day was, I felt as if, and I, that the budget would be reflective of not the needs of the entire county, but the needs of one person running for reelection, which we see in our county commission, let's be honest. Um, so those were my concerns, those concerns still exist. I would love to see it go back to countywide. It's not an easy thing to run countywide elections, but the reason that I think it's appropriate is I think it's better for the school district. And I think it's better for the students, and I think it's better for the community, not that I think it's better for the candidate, it's harder for the candidate. But it's, it's better for everybody else. And, and so this was designed to help get certain candidates elected. That's all it was ever about, either making it easier for certain groups, um, whether monetarily or and I, I think we all are, represent Manatee County, and we should represent the entire Manatee County, and so I, I'm all in favor of reversing it, but I, here's the thing, we did go out to a vote, this is where it's, I, this is the part I struggle with. We went out to a vote, and the community spoke. That's the hard place, because as much as I think it's wrong, and I truly believe it's wrong for the community, I don't think the community was well-educated on what it really meant, and I think they just saw, school board wants to do something, yes. I think it was actually, like, came from a good place, like, we trust the school board, they're asking for something, we're just going to say yes because we support them. That's how I took that yes. I'm not convinced that people really understood what they were doing or what they were voting on, they saw school board, oh, yeah, check, yes, we'll help them out. Unfortunately, I don't think this was a good decision for the community. I don't think it was a good decision for this board, but I really don't think it's a good decision for the community. And when I would go talk to people, they'd ask my opinion, and I'd say, well, first of all, I said the board, you know, voted to put it on there to ask you. And it's, your question is, would you like to strengthen your one-fifth of the vote to remove the four-fifths? Right? Like, because that's what that does, it strengthens your one-fifth, but it removes the other four, right? But I don't think it was very well, like, we didn't put anything out so that people were educated on it, people did not. I don't think most people knew what they were voting on, to be quite honest with you, which I think happens a lot in elections, so.
Do you know what, what the uh, what, what the vote?
I'm trying to look that up, but I can't find, I see amendments, amendment names, but they don't tell me what the amendment was um, on there. Um, thank you, were you done?
For the moment, I'll see if I can find that.
Ms. Brayden, did you have anything?
I'll say, I didn't know this was on the ballot because of my involvement, but people called me and asked me about this as well. And the voters decided to do the district-wide. The board just brought it up and put it on the ballot. I, I don't just go to district two schools, I go to schools east, west, north, and south, just, just ask the principals, the students, and everyone, tennis players lately. I don't go just and say, I'm your school board m- member for, I don't go to Manatee High tennis matches and say, well, I'm district two, but I'm here to watch your match. I don't do that. I go there and say, I'm a board member, I'm here to see your match. Is there anything that you need? And I've been creating a bucket list for the entire district and that sport, to be honest with you, I had that conversation last night with a uh, parent. So I don't see benefit in doing this district-wide, because I believe in my heart, I do represent the entire district and but district two is who voted for me. District five is who voted for Mr. Tatum, and uh, four for Mr. Choate. I don't think that we need to keep bouncing back and forth with this. We voted to align our district lines to match the county. And now we want to do this, I don't think that's fair. Uh, I think there's a lot of uh, unity in keeping district lines and district seats together to uh, eliminate all of the confusion. Uh, because it is confusing. Uh, you don't know how many people I talked to that, what am I here, what am I, I ultimately try to get them to pull out their voter ID card so they can see that, all the way up into congressional district, they don't know what congressional districts or um uh judicial they're in, so, um, I just think that bringing this up now is um, an election cycle is not good, and I wouldn't support changing this at all. I think district-wide is uh, is a lot harder on not only the community, but to the person running. And district two was a huge advocate of doing district wide, or uh, district areas, uh, one through five, so I, I, I'm happy with the way this is, I don't have an appetite to change it, uh, I don't know what the rest of the board members are. But that's, that's where I'm at.
Can I tell you the percentage real quick?
Oh, yeah.
You got it?
It was fifty-one percent, fifty-one point three eight percent, yes. Forty-eight point six two.
What amendment was it?
It's not amendment, it's school board referendum.
It was a referendum, that's what it says.
Oh, that wasn't, I read it as that was a referendum village, but we did that in the, in the special election in twenty eighteen.
Yes, so it was fifty-one point three eight and forty-eight point six two.
Okay.
Can you tell district two, how many, what their.
I have to look at precinct details.
Uh, Mr. Tatum.
What are you asking for?
She's saying, district two preferred it, so.
Well, she referred to, um.
We're gonna, while you look at that, we're gonna go to Mr. Tatum.
Now I have to do this?
Well, you don't have to do anything, so. Go ahead.
So, I want everyone to know, I did put some thought into this, and I, the general principle of you should be able to vote for the people that represent you is, is a good principle. But upon further introspection, so to speak, upon further review, that's not necessarily how our electoral system is set up, and I'll start with, for instance, uh, our state representative locally. We elect him in our district, there are a hundred and twenty house districts, but when he goes to the legislature in the state of Florida, he, he votes on laws that affect the whole state of Florida. And the reason that I believe that we do that kind of thing, and there are a hundred and twenty house districts, and I think forty senate districts, I was just looking that up, it seems to me it's like forty-two now, but what I found was forty, is that it gives the possibility for a representative to at least understand a certain demographic and size of a population, and then to take those interests and put them all together with everybody else's interest in the county or in the state, to then come up with a, a policy that's good for either the whole state or the whole county. If this were a smaller school district, like, I, I grew up in Beaver Creek, Ohio, the school district up there is about eight thousand students. I looked this up the other day, they have one big high school, two middle school, junior highs, and maybe six or seven elementaries. I'd be more willing to say, yeah, we can elect this county, do this countywide. But if we, there are about, what, four hundred thousand people in the county, Ms. Dag, Yagustino, something like that?
Four or five.
Right, so even the house elections for the state of Florida are about a hundred and eighty thousand people in each district. So you're actually looking at, is that three times as, at least two and a half times as many people if you try and do this in a, in a countywide election? Almost four hundred thousand people. So, I'm, I'm, I like it the way that it is. There's pros and cons either way, but because it's such a large district, that dividing it up like this allows us to focus on a, when I say the, it doesn't mean that I don't, I mean, I can't think of any vote that I've taken up here, nor have I really seen it on this board where, and maybe Ms. Messenger has seen it, who's been around a little longer.
I think you're calling me old.
Seasoned.
Seasoned, I didn't say, that, that I said, you know, this is good only for Lakewood Ranch High School out in district five for me, and I'm, I'm pushing for it. But the point is, is that we divide up legislative districts so that they're not too big, so that someone can at least bring the interests of that district to the whole board in general. Uh, the second thing, so I'm not in favor of, of this, that's one of the reasons, the second reason is, is for the money reason, and and it is true, for a candidate, you have to go out and raise a lot more money, so it is easier. But for people especially who are worried about dark money and all, you know, the issues that they have with politics and money together, we've seen in the, in the district-wide, in the district-wide county races recently, a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, all kinds of interests coming in from outside of the county, videos, YouTube. You, if you blow this up to a, a, an election, I mean, I say blow it up, if you extend it or increase it to an election of four hundred thousand people, then you're going to have to have the resources, and you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, media, ABC news spots, uh, just like it was for the county, you know, county commissioners that we saw. So, to summarize, if it was a smaller district of maybe, you know, like I said, a city or something, I would be in favor of it, but I think that for the reasons of being able to hear the interests of a certain portion of the community, and then bring those to the whole board, and to keep it from becoming a real large amount of money issue, which then will require, not necessarily require, but you will see outside interests coming in and all kinds of money from all kinds of places coming in, and I know a lot of the public doesn't like that, I'm in favor of, of keeping it where it is. I mean, I was looking at some of the state districts the other day, as opposed to a county school district, and they're about the same size, you know, geographically. So I'm for keeping it as it is, we still have almost eighty thou, I think somewhere between seventy-seven and eighty thousand people when we went through that redistricting the other day, that's, that's still a big chunk of people that are voting for each one of us. Whereas if we blow it up to four hundred thousand people, that's a whole different animal that I would, and we've seen what happens at the county level when that happens. It's not pretty. So, those are my thoughts on that, I'm not in favor of it.
Can I just point out, there's one flaw in your analogy?
Okay.
Um, the legislature, when they're elected by their district, they only represent that district. When you are elected by district five, you still represent the entire county. It's not a comparative analogy, whether you're elected by all four hundred thousand people, you still represent all four hundred thousand people. They just didn't have a say in you. They just didn't have a say in you even being there.
I well, I I think that's a philosophy.
No, that's legal and and um I just want to point out one thing. You asked about district two. There is a difference of three votes. Three votes in district two is the dividing line and those three votes were in favor of no. So no, one in district two over yes. I'm just I'm just I just did the math.
There you go.
I'm just I just I just want you to know I did the math. I added up all the district two.
All of it was.
And and Mr. Tatum, as far as hundreds of thousands of dollars to run, you know, keep in mind that before twenty twenty two, they were all district wide. And my budget was forty thousand dollars. You know. And it was enough and I don't know what Ms. Messengers was and yeah, there was no dark money in mind.
Can I? Say not to be a rebuttal.
You're rebuttal. I love it. Let's do it.
I've been to Tallahassee and I've watched our legislators talk. And they don't go up there and just talk about just their district when they're trying to get a law passed. Some of them may, but most of the time laws that are passed affect the whole state. So that's the same thing with us. Whatever policies we implement. And and vote on affects us district wide. I don't bring a policy just to be enforced in district two. Uh, or talk about a policy that just for five or four or three. So I'm like, so don't leave you out, so. Yeah, we every decision we make is for our district, however, you know. I'm I'm still staying solid with Mr. Tatum that I need. We need to leave it here. There's going to be so much on his ballot. This year is going to be crazy. Um, and trust me, I've already gotten the calls, but. Yeah, I yeah, I think everything we do here, I don't think we do it for. Okay, I'll say this too. There are some that are servant leaders and I've had this conversation here recently. And there are some that are self-serving. I'm on the mindset of I'm a servant leader. I'm here because I I felt the need to be here and I think that's where everybody is here. I don't think there's a self-serving person. Here that I that I'm aware of. I think people really believe in their heart. They're here to make change. And educate our kids in a in a wholesome atmosphere. So and when you get into a countywide thing, I think that's when the battle starts and I don't like that. You know, the county has a district, a countywide seat in every election. And it's a battle. Every cycle, there's a county seat, so.
You still have to reside in your district.
Right, right, I get that.
It's not like the county commission where they can live anywhere in the county like.
On their district.
They can live anywhere. It's not like that, so it's 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 not it's the same battle that you have.
On the districts, they gotta live in their district.
But not that not that large ones. That's my point like it's so that's different, right? Like if when we were at large, like I still had to live in district one.
Correct, they're still district, yeah.
Right, so that is so confusing. Oh, I'm running district wide, but I have to live in two.
Yeah, I I'll just say, I think. I get why they did districts because you don't want, you know, five board members all from one area and dominating. The the board and then making choices. So I do understand why they did the districts. To repres- so that you have to be in that district. So then in that with that breadth, with that in mind and that same breath. I I have to feel like the. I'm torn on this, by the way. I'm I'm like fifty fifty like the vote was, but.
You grew up here and probably lived in.
But 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 I want but I um and I went to Bajal Elementary and I mean, I went to three elementary schools, so but bottom line is that. I think that if the districts are set to where you can. I think at times when it was county vote. You're going to get people voting for or against that don't even really know you. And they like the color of your sign because they drove on Liquid Ranch Boulevard or they don't like the way your name looks. Or whatever, right? Like, you're going to have some of that where I feel like it when it is district, you're more hyper focused on getting those people in. And they're going to know you a little bit better than the whole county. Now, I mean, me personally, I don't I don't. I mean, there were people all over the place that couldn't vote for me, so I don't I don't I don't. I don't know. I I'm torn, I to be honest with you. I don't think right now is necessarily the time. We've only seen one election cycle. It has never been brought up to me. Since two thousand eighteen, well, I guess maybe twenty two is the only thing, the only first election of it. It's never been brought up to me of saying we should change that. If I would have had a lot of people say we should change that, then yeah, I think it'd be something to look into. I do agree with what the board did last time though about pushing it out to where it doesn't hurt midterm people and that sort of thing. It'd be interesting to see. I don't know if anyone do this, but it'd be interesting to like just to have a poll, to have a poll like it'd be it'd be interesting. Has the county always been the way it is like district only? I don't remember. Are they been have they been district wide? Like, you gotta live in district one, two, three, four, five, but it was countywide vote. I thought they they were at one point. Countywide vote. I don't know. I'm not in favor of doing it right now, I don't think, um, just because we've only seen one cycle, so. It's hard to just it's hard to see did it does it help, hurt, whatever. There's pros and cons to all of it. I I. I don't know, I'm extremely torn and so my gut says just keep it, I guess.
I just want to point out two things. One, in twenty sixteen, when I won, I only spent sixteen thousand dollars. I was outspent ten to one.
It's a different climate now.
In twenty twenty, I only spent twenty two thousand dollars. Those were countywide elections. You you can't say it's a different climate now because I can tell you at the time, I'll go back up. There was.
Well, twenty twenty is right, COVID, I mean.
No, I'm talking about twenty sixteen. There was seventy five thousand dollars spent by one candidate for our county commission race. The eighty thousand dollars spent, another eighty thousand dollars. Those were single district elections. That wasn't even the countywide ones. Countywide sixty three thousand dollars, so my point is like. The argument that it will make it less expensive. You spent more on your campaign than I did and you had a single district one, so I don't think that is. Accurate. I just don't think the data actually supports that. I just don't. I want to point out one further negative. This was one of the negatives that was back in twenty seventeen and I forgot to say it. One of the concerns that I had and there were board members that I think were envisioning this when they supported this was that it would add to further bureaucracy of this board. And further expansion of this board, adding additional politicians to mirror the county commission in the future. For instance, right now, we're just a single district, but then there will be the argument later on that. We need to mirror and now have two at-large county commi- uh, s- school board members. That was another concern that I had and I know that I talked to people that had that same concern. Yes, I just wanted to say that. I I it it there was a concern that it would lead to that in the future. And there were board members that I believe that was one of their goals.
I just my and 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 now too with term limits, I you know, I don't. I don't know that, so that's a little bit different. I didn't think about that until just now, but I also thought the only reason I brought that up now is because. Thinking about like. How and and I know you you two of you, it doesn't matter, it only matters to us, the the new ones like in twenty twenty two. But if we, I'm just I'm just envisioning like, how do you put this out there, right? So we would say, hey, let's add this. Maybe this year's ballot, I guess. I'm just in my head, right? So then we would, I I mean, it seems like if we did that, we would want to wait four years. So it doesn't affect anybody, you know, only new people running. By that time, we're all out. And I mean, well, I guess theoretically not because you guys are grandfathered in, so you guys have another eight going, so but what I'm saying, we those three of us are out anyways. I don't know how that I mean, doesn't really help or hurt. I'm just talking, I guess. I I don't know.
It doesn't sound like there's an appetite by the board to take that.
It doesn't. It doesn't. Not right now, but um, it's a good thought. I mean, I I, you know, I'm torn with it. I just would say. I wish we didn't have to bring it up for the for voters to say what they wanted to do. You know? So but I again, like I said, the biggest reason I am a no is I've never heard anybody talk about it and say that we need to change this back or it's hurting, it's helping. And maybe that's just because it's too early.
I just think bouncing.
Message out, you know, to the public, call him, let him know what you think.
Yeah, absolutely. Please email me.
I I just think.
Show W U at Manatee Schools on net.
I think bouncing back and forth on things like this just shows that the an instability. That's what I that's what it sends a message to me. They can't make up their mind. Do they want to be countywide? Do they want to be district?
Well, there's all different. There's all different. Other than one, there's all different elected officials up here, so of course we don't have the same opinion, so I'm I'm not.
In the district wide, to the uh, being in your district, I feel like it almost. Makes that particular district, you're more approachable. Uh, when I go to my schools versus your school or your school.
It's not my school.
I I understand in your district, but I feel just as welcome in any of them. But when I go to.
We are giving schools.
Right.
On our names, then let's just and then I'll I'll go as a board member, then let's cancel out all any schools that are underneath our names then, right? I mean, theoretically. Why do we even have that? I'm I'm just asking. So but anyways, doesn't seem like there's an there's an appetite to to do that. We talk about this board, the school assignments later on. Just kidding, just kidding. To the staff, have a good spring break. Y'all deserve it. And it's uh, I know it's it's always it can't believe it's already the end of the year here, um, so have a good, safe, fun spring break. Wear sunscreen. And uh, we are adjourned.